Wait, just hold on. I want to go. Okay. It's on.
Oh, sorry, you first. Share.
Out of order.
Ms. Delavega. Ms. Delavega is absent. Ms. Perez is absent.
No, Ms. Perez is here. Ms. Perez is here.
Okay, Ms. Perez is present. Mr. Rodriguez?
Here.
Mr. Tundidores absent. Mr. Zogby?
Present.
And Mr. Junco is absent. Sir, you do not have sufficient members to conduct business.
Thank you.
So, until you have a quorum, what you can do, if you like, is you can go through the ceremonial items, you know.
For the record, council member Junco is here, so we do have quorum.
He is, he is here? Okay. All right, then I, all right, yes, you have a quorum now, so disregard that.
Thank you, Ms. Monica. Okay, do me a favor, excuse me, invocation please?
Through the chair?
Yes.
Before the invocation, I would, I would request, I would like to request a moment of silence for a dear friend of mine's father, Senator Renee Garcia, whose father just passed away a little bit earlier today.
Please lead us in your invocation, please.
Lord, we ask for your continued blessing upon our city. We ask that you grant the members of this council wisdom and understanding in every decision they face. Amen.
Thank you, and leading us in a pledge of allegiance, Mr. Councilmember Junco.
I pledge allegiance to the fire. To the party. To the nation under God.
For the record, council member Tundidores present?
Mr. Councilmember, may I say something technically, please, through, Mr. President, through the chair? Okay, so recently, the law department issued a memo about voting, and we recommended an urge that voting after the fact, that is, when a member is not present, not be continued. I realize that it's been a past practice in the city, but under Florida law and under the city charter, what's contemplated is that a member be present. So unless the member is here and has stepped out momentarily for a phone call or the restroom or something like that, you know, what the roll call vote contemplates is that the member be present when you're voting. And if there's any questions, please feel free to ask us.
That's it. Thank you. And before we start, I'm going to ask the council, the members in the council to please lower your voices and the noise, please. Thank you. Officer, can you please close the doors outside? And thank you. Next item.
Through the chair. Before we continue. For the record, Councilmember Tundido is present.
Mr. Councilmember, may I say something technically, please, through, Mr. President, through the chair? Okay, so recently, the Law Department issued a memo about voting, and we recommended an urge that voting after the fact, that is when a member is not present, not be continued. I realize that it's been a past practice in the city, but under Florida law and under the city charter, what's contemplated is that a member be present. So unless the member is here and has stepped out momentarily for a phone call or the restroom or something like that, you know, what the roll call vote contemplates is that the member be present when you're voting, and if there's any questions, please feel free to ask us. That's it. Thank you. And before we start, I'm gonna ask the council, the members in the council to please lower your voices and the noise, please, thank you. Officer, can you please close the doors outside? And thank you. Next item.
Through the chair, before we continue, just briefly in Spanish.
Next item, please.
All lobbyists must register with the city clerk. As a courtesy to others, please refrain from using cellular telephones or other similar electronic devices in the council chamber. A maximum of three speakers in favor and three speakers in opposition will be allowed to address the council on any one item. Each speaker's comments will be limited to three minutes. No signs or placards in support of or in opposition to an item or speaker shall be permitted within the council chamber. Any person interested in making comments or posing questions on matters of public concern or on any item on the agenda may do so during the meeting. Members of the public may address the city council on any item pertaining to city business during the comments and questions portion of the meeting. A member of the public is limited to one appearance. Before the city council and the speaker's comments will be limited to three minutes. Individuals should be respectful of the elected officials and staff and make every effort to speak with a moderate tone using appropriate language and avoiding personal attacks. Members of the public in the audience shall refrain from shouting or making remarks from their seats to the mayor, council members, or staff sitting on the dais. The public can view public meetings on the city's YouTube page.
Thank you. Next item, please.
There are no presentations, sir, so comments and questions?
Yeah, first speaker, please.
Raúl Alonso.
Good evening, sir.
I am here respectfully requesting council consideration to leave the current restrictions on my property located at 201 West 22nd Street, Base A and B, formerly operated as A-Ball LLC. We're simply asking to reopen as a fully permitted 40-seat cafeteria. It is, as it has been approved in the past, dating back to 1974. Unfortunately, this situation began because we were never properly notified of the meeting that led to these restrictions. As a result, our business has been closed for nearly eight months. Through no fault of our own. We have lost valuable time, income, and community connections. But our intent has always been to do the right thing and operate in compliance with every city regulation. To demonstrate our full compliance and commitment, I will submit a complete as-built plant or the facility for review by the building and fire departments. This building has a five-foot setback from the property line on a 60-foot right-of-way. Parking had never been a problem. Closing the cafeteria and part of the city puts this business as a new building, which falls under the new rules, and in that case, there'd be no parking allowed on that thing. Although with these new cars and the fact that they have 60-foot right-of-way and five-feet setback, which most of the buildings in the area do not have, makes it feasible to access and use the area as a parking facility. All I'm asking is a chance to reopen and operate responsibly. To bring this small local cafeteria back to the neighborhood it serves. Parking regulations really do not apply in this area. Any other cafeteria has much less parking and less facilities than this cafeteria has. Thank you much for your time, and I stand here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Alonso. Claudia, can you please help Mr. Alonso? The first steps need to be taken. So, Mr. Alonso, speak to our director. Building and zoning, she'll take your information and got you or ask her any questions. But now, you can, you can get his information another time. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Alonso. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Juan Santana.
Juan Santana, 5601 West 10th Avenue. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good evening. This question is basically directed directly to the mayor. Unfortunately, your chief operational officer has not been able to contact me appropriately. I had a business owner, a woman in business by all means, reach out to me that she has a licensing issue that she's trying to comply with here in the city of Hialeah. And, you know, I call it the ping-pong effect. One department ping-pongs you to another department, you're ping-ponging to another one. In conclusion, what I'm trying to do is solve the issue. I was here to talk about something else, but regarding my issue, I gave you guys some paperwork regarding a certain candidate that should be disqualified and everything else, but again, nothing new with this clerk here, you know, incompetency in all departments. But basically, it's more important to help this business owner, okay? And I've asked your chief operation officer, having gotten no contact, been to your office several times, I understand you're busy. I don't know what she does. You know, we're paying $180,000 for this woman to work here, but you know, after the display that she just did outside in the hallway, please reconsider and be the strong mayor that you're supposed to be. We don't need a chief operation officer here. You are the administrator here, nobody else, okay? And not only that, we need to fix this issue because there's a, there's a category issue for this business. They don't have, they don't serve oil at this business, and they don't serve milk, so it doesn't have, it doesn't need a grease trap. And they're requiring the business to have a grease trap. Now, mind you, we don't give grants here, you know, to small business owners. We don't give grants to nonprofits, only certain favoritism groups, okay? So, you know how much a grease trap costs? $20,000. Mind you, I've been trying to help her find different spots just to move, for her to have a grease trap, just to fall into the category of having a cafeteria when she's not a cafeteria. She serves Herbalife products, okay? I'm asking you, mayor, please get in your staff in order, right? I also ask the department head for building, for a report, his assistant, not him directly, to give me a report stating everything we had in the meeting. That way, I can go get an exemption. There's an exemption under the Health Department, and we still need to make a clarification for that division of businesses here in the city of Hialeah, because come to find out, she's not the only one in compliance. There's like four or five other ones, okay? And we're, we're supposed to be here to help businesses, not, you know, put them through this loop of being in a ping-pong ball, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Through the, through the council president, if I may, just a note on one of the comments about the elections. Florida law is clear that the person who serves is, for lack of a better word, our elections processing officer, which is the city clerk, it's a ministerial duty. So if a candidate appears and they facially comply with the law in terms of, you know, being a city elector, having the required residency, and being an adult and so forth, you know, and they present the paperwork, their duty is, you know, to accept it and process them. The documents about whether candidates have complied or not complied with election requirements have been given to county and state officials, but her duty is, as I stated, and I just want that on the record. Thank you. Next, next, next speaker, please.
Jocelyn Desarda.
Hi, how are you? Good evening, good.
How you doing?
Good afternoon. Sorry, I got a little emotional. I'm here because I need help. I'm going through dialysis already over 10 years. And I've carried it well with my kids. I have two kids. My son is 13. My daughter just now started Miami date. And the last five or six years, it's, dialysis has gotten really bad with my legs, with my bones. I can't walk. Unfortunately, where I live, there's a 14 stair flights that have to go up and down. Every time, I'm in long-term care now, I need to move. I don't have the money to move, nor do I have the money to continue paying the rent. You guys know the rent is sky-high right now. And I have Tuesdays and Thursdays therapies, Mondays, Wednesday, Friday dialysis, already six years. That's non-stop. That's every day. I live to survive, like, that is my fight every day. My son goes to Hialeah, the school in Hialeah, and he plays for the Hialeah Hurricane football team. He's going through a lot just seeing me going through what I'm going through, and I don't want to have to change his schools. And then I can't leave to another, like, either state or city because I'm with Miami transplant, and I've been listed there for five years. So if I were to get a call and I move, or if I go tomorrow, I have to start the process all over. And I don't know what else to do because I can't continue paying my rent. I need help. I, I know they said that there's vouchers and there's things that might be available. I'm not asking for the, for everything to be paid, but I don't know. I, I need help. I don't know what else to do.
Through the chair. I am so sorry you're going through all of this. Steven, he's my deputy chief of staff. He's gonna, if you don't mind talking to him, to see how we can help you.
Thank you guys very much. And there's a couple of you that I reached out and you guys have all helped me move forward to it. I got here today, and I appreciate you and your time.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Yolanda Guerra.
Madam Mayor.
Buenas tardes.
Good evening. I've come to ask you a couple of questions. I've been here 58 years. I've worked as a teacher. I've been a teacher of Spanish.
Tengo cultura para muchas cosas, pero me dediqué a vendedora.
I dedicated myself to sales.
¿Con qué dispone usted de cultura, de experiencia? Porque una ciudad es tan como un negocio.
A city is like a business. It's bigger than a business.
Me dijeron que usted no terminó High School. ¿Es cierto?
That you did not finish high. That you have never worked.
Las pusieron en ese lugar.
They have put you in the system. And you accepted it.
Pero sinceramente usted no tiene cualidad para eso.
But sincerely.
Base. Aquí hay muchísimos comisionados todos con cultura que pudieran haberlos puesto bobo. Yo hablé con Bobo y él me hizo un favor a la ciudad. Porque yo le dije que estábamos romando el anterior alcalde y jefe del departamento de agua. Él estaba aquí el día. Y él lo votó en 48 horas. Todavía sigue el alcalde por su parte. Pero usted no tiene, usted no tiene base. Va a ser una desgracia para Hialeah que usted tome ese puesto. Usted no tiene preparación y tiene cultura. Eso es lo que yo quería decirle. Piense bien que esto va a hacerle mal a la ciudad que usted vive.
You have gone a harm to the city.
A los dos años que llegué de Hialeah, de Cuba, yo viví en la Ley Jun y la cuatro.
I lived in the June.
Después fabricé mi casa a los dos años. Trabajamos mucho.
I fabricated my house.
Una casa.
For two years.
Nada hacer.
My husband and I worked very hard. But we had a base.
Teníamos para hacerlo. Yo tenía, aunque era maestra, tiene cultura.
I was a teacher with.
Cultura española para eso. Dejé que gente más joven con cultura.
There's people younger with more.
Buena moral después como usted va a hacer adiciones, chacho, doble su casa, te pedí un solo permiso.
How are you gonna say you've done two additions? Double your house without pulling permits.
Todas con permiso.
I've done addition to my house.
Ya puse el aluminio. Yo pedí permiso. Usted tiene cerca de 40.
Aluminio in my house.
Usted no pidió permisos.
Permission.
Usted no tiene vergüenza para el alcalde de Hialeah. Usted tiene que pagar primero la cultura de la ciudad. Eso es lo único que le quería.
For you to mayor, you have.
Gracias.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Through the chair, yes. Yolanda Guerra, quiero que sepa que todo se va a investigar. Nadie está por encima de la ley. Tú has hecho todas tus cosas legales en tu casa, una adición cerca, todas las mejoras que has hecho en tu casa, lo has hecho con el dolor y el de sacar permiso como Dios manda, como la ley manda, como el código manda. Y es una vergüenza que la jefa de cumplimiento, la alcaldesa interina, haga hecho tantas cosas sin permiso y haga hecho estas cosas cuando debería ser el ejemplo de la ciudad. Así que te entendemos. Nada de esto se va a ir así. No se va a desaparecer ni se va a barrer debajo de la alfombra. Todo se va a investigar. Todo se va a investigar. No te preocupes. It's gracias. Gracias, Yolanda. It's a, it's a shame that the chief compliance officer, the interim mayor of this city is above all departments, including the code compliance department, and to know that in her own house, the interim mayor has so many violations and so, an illegal efficiency, an illegal addition that hasn't paid taxes, so there could be implications of tax fraud, and, and so many people in this city have gone through the pain of receiving violations for exactly the same thing, for having additions, fences, driveways done without permits, and that our chief enforcement officer, our interim mayor, hasn't pulled one permit and has gotten away with it. But I guarantee you, it won't, they won't, she won't get away with it. We have an excellent stellar code compliance department that is by law required to investigate all allegations of this sort of thing, and it will be investigated. And shame on this interim mayor for having done this and still having had the nerve to run for mayor when she's supposed to be the example. Ella está supuesta a ser el ejemplo, el ejemplo en esta ciudad. Así que no te preocupes que eso se iba a investigar. Y si tiene violaciones como tal parece que la tiene, eso se va a investigar y se va a imponer penalidades.
Through the chair.
Thank you.
Yo no, no se preocupe señora, yo no iba a responder, pero creo que debo de responder. Me da muchísima pena con usted que le hayan dado esa información para que viniera a hacer una campaña política aquí a un lugar donde estamos trabajando para los residentes de Hialeah. Y para responderle al concejal, para responderle al concejal. It is a shame that you are up here campaigning for someone else.
Try me.
No, you, no, no, don't try me.
You're gonna lose this one.
Things that I can say, okay? That's all that I wanted to say.
You're gonna lose this one.
Because we're not up here to be campaigning.
We're not campaigning.
It's okay.
The law is the law.
You're here campaigning for someone that did avoid paying taxes over their house.
Is the truth, and the law is the law, and you are not above the law.
Having a little dirty.
Don't try me.
You're doing a little campaign, a dirty campaign.
Don't.
On how that my deceased father left to us.
No excuses and no distractions.
To be arguing.
Truth is the truth. No te preocupes, esto se va a investigar y justicia se va a hacer. Next, next, next speaker, please.
Jose Ozzy.
Good evening, Jose Ozzy, 788 southeast Park Drive. Now, I want to talk about a bigger issue that's gonna affect us for the next 15 years, 50 years. The, the issue with our parks, I met with the residents of Millia Heart that we're about to lose Hialeah Middle School because they're gonna build condos there that will be coming up to you in the future, because once we lose parkland, we don't get it back. And Slade Park, we're about to give it to Julio Robino, CEO of the Charter School. And the first reading, there was. And the first reading, there was no discussion. Quickly, Mr. Zogby, quickly, you, you broke off the, the discussion. Motion and Louis, you, you seconded the motion, and, and you're defending the parks. There was no motion. So Babcock Park, Goodlet Park, Bright Park is on county, the Miami Dade County property. We share it with, with, with the Dade County School, no problem. This is different. Why is it different? Ma- Ms. Melinda de la Vega, you asked Hugo Arza twice. Are the residents going to be able to use the park for the fifty-year? And, and you can see the, the replay on, on YouTube. This is what he did. He didn't answer you. He didn't answer you. He didn't answer the question. And then he go, we're gonna follow the ordinance. So he didn't answer the question. Now, you expect uh, an attorney to like confuse everybody. It was a lot of confusion last city council meeting, but the confusion was caused by the attorney Arza and our attorney Rafael Suarez Rivas. If you remember, okay, so we're gonna give Slade Park for fifty years to Cohia, right, without allowing the residents to use it. But our city attorney wrote a resolution that's gonna end in twenty twenty-eight, right? We're gonna be able to use the gym until twenty twenty-eight, but guess what? The gym's not gonna be finished till twenty twenty-nine. So you gotta ask yourself, why would the city attorney write a resolution that we could use the gymnasium until the year twenty twenty-eight? When the gymnasium's not gonna be finished until twenty twenty-nine? Why didn't he answer the simple question? Are the residents gonna be able to use Slade Park? Why did they separate the use of the park with a resolution? That has never been done. And the confusion that was caused here last city council meeting. You expect the, the paid attorney to, to have this confusion. But for the, Mr. Rafael Rivas not to ask, answer a simple question, can the resident have legal rights? It's very, we are clear, we have to ask permission to Cohia even to do maintenance work. We're gonna have to a- ask Cohia. So that, that's like, like really, really important, and I hope when this comes up in, in front of you, you ask the question and you have to get it, because it was not in writing. We know what already Julio Robino did with the water plant. This water problem that we having? And when, when we built the annex area, Julio Robino did not put a police station or fire station or park there. And now he wants us to give him Slade Park for his charter schools, and on purpose they left out that the residents can use it. Please clarify that, and I, I appreciate make it very clear. If not on the paper, it ain't gonna happen, because it's not legal. They'll take you to court. Thank you.
There are no more registered speakers.
Next item, please.
Announcements of cor- corrections and amendments to the agenda. The proposed resolution for consent item triple P has been updated to reflect the correct resolution. And the language on the agenda for consent item H has been amended to match the corresponding backup documentation to the item.
Any notes? I lost it. I thought that was gonna be one second. Yep. Yes, I need to be removed for O, please.
I can't vote on it.
O, you're abstaining from item O?
Yes, please.
If you can just state the nature of your conflict, sir?
Uh, yes, I work for the company.
So we can pull item O from consent and vote on it separately, and that way you can?
Motion of the council?
Um, if I may?
Yes.
Through the chair. Um, I would like to pull item V, as in Victor.
Anyone else? Through the chair, I'd like to pull item W. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? And can I have a motion, please? Motion. Can I have a second? Please take roll.
Mr. Tundidor?
Yes.
Mr. Zogby?
Yes.
Ms. De la Vega?
Yes.
Mr. Junco? Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Motion carries the consent agenda has passed except items O, V, and W.
O, B, and W, alright.
So per item O, sir, if you want to hand a gavel to Zombie? Yes, yes.
You wanted to stay? Madam clerk, uh, can you please read item B from the resolutions into the record?
Item O, sir.
I'm sorry, item O. Oh, I thought Monica pulled uh, Ms. Perez.
Oh, I thought we were going in order. In O, V, and W.
Okay.
Yeah.
Item O into record?
Proposed resolution waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the mayor or her designate and the city clerk as a testing witness on behalf of the city to increase purchase order number twenty twenty-five dash seven three nine in an amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars issued to National Auto Parts Warehouse LLC for the payment of original equipment manufacturer and aftermarket parts and accessories for city apparatus. Approving the purchase order in a total cumulative amount not to exceed one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars and providing for an effective date.
Absent any input or comments from the public pleasure of the council on item O of the resolutions. We have a motion from Councilman Tundidor?
Yes, sir.
Motion from Councilman, uh, first motion.
Second.
Second from Councilwoman De la Vega. Please call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Tundidor?
Yes.
Mr. Zogby?
Yes.
Ms. De la Vega?
Yes.
Mr. Junco? Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Motion carries, the item is approved.
Would the next one be item B?
B.
Oh, V. Oh, I marked down B. That's what my mistake.
Let me just grab the council.
Yeah, okay. That's how quickly I have to give up the gavel?
Proposed resolution authorizing the mayor, her designate and the city clerk as a testing witness on behalf of the city to issue and execute a purchase order to Coastal Waste and Recycling Incorporated for the processing of residential recyclables, approving the expenditure in an amount not to exceed five hundred and twenty thousand dollars and providing for an effective date.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have someone here from Public Works?
Is there a member of Public Works here, please? Thank you.
Is Elizabeth on tonight?
She's drinking, but she's not.
One and done for her. We weren't that entertaining. Um, hello, how are you? Good evening.
Good.
So I have some questions um, on this contract. This contract is renewed on an annual basis, correct?
Correct.
Alright, so if we were to break away from renewing this contract on recyclables, I know that this is an age-old uh, dialogue that we've had upon this um, council. But seeing that the expenditure is five hundred and twenty thousand dollars and we're looking for ways and discussing ways to improve um, efficiency uh, in general. Would it be something that we're open to discussing, since we're not recycling? We're being charged just to haul a second load of garbage, a second trash. It's not really being recycled. People are under the impression that they're recycling and they're not. Um, so it's kind of deceiving additionally to, to the service now, you know, and we're being charged extra. Um, should this be a topic of conversation, of something that we would like to eliminate as a city function? Um, something that we're offering, um, considering that it's five hundred and twenty thousand dollars that we pay annually? I'm, I'm open to discussion with the council if we will not have any penalties, correct? So if we were to break this contract and not renew it today, we will not have any penalties with the provider?
Uh, I don't believe so. I, I will say your description um, was, is very accurate for the way the contract existed last year. We spent a lot of time last year renegotiating the, the contracts. Um, and everything kind of changed in recycling because of those renegotiations. So let me uh, update the, the council, so you, you understand what the decision points are. For coastal uh, waste and recycling, this five hundred and twenty thousand dollars is for the disposition of seven point seven tons of recyclable material within the city. You're absolutely right. Last year, this stuff was going straight to a, a dump site and it wasn't being recycled. Um, this company came with a new program where they're taking that material to uh, something that's sanctioned by the state. It's a waste-to-energy plant. So we actually, under state law, are now uh, recycling. So what's kind of extraordinary is we weren't heading in this direction. We were heading to where you were saying, maybe canceling the program last year. The, they lowered the cost per ton, lower than what it currently is to put in at a, a dump site. It's like seventy-two versus sixty-eight dollars. So.
Saying that it was approximately double, one forty-two per ton versus sixty, sixty-eight to have the waste connections processed to the recyclable materials. So, but from the, to, just to refresh my memory, there was a lot of these items that were considered, um, whatever, what was the words, the appropriate word that they used? I think it was that they had, they were damaged or they weren't ready of being recycled, right? Because it wasn't, the pizza box had stains, right? There was a plastic bag where they were not allowed to recycle with plastic. So now, no matter the condition of the recyclable item, whether the milk carton is rinsed or not, they will take it and we're not be, they're not separating.
They take it, it goes to a plant. If it operates like the county plant, which I was familiar with, they do some separation there of things that they don't want to burn. But the vast majority of it is burned. The small amount that can't be burned and converted to energy is then put in a, a dump site.
Okay.
And the, there is, uh, I guess the state nearly ten years ago, because the recycling programs weren't going very well, I think we all know that, uh, opened up the door to waste-to-energy as being counting towards the city's uh, recycling uh, possibilities.
Repeat that last sentence, if you just said.
Uh, this actually counts. It, it makes us comport with state law that we're actually recycling. There still is a, a state requirement for communities to recycle. Though I will grant you, there are many communities in the last five years who stepped out of this. This actually keeps us in, in full compliance with the state requirements.
Okay. And is there, I don't know, I'm just saying, is there a, a way of negotiating then? Let's say if it's the pleasure of the council, since they did change the parameters and now they are going to be recycling some items, and maybe that's something that the council um, chooses and likes. Is there something that maybe we could negotiate with the contract then, so instead of doing it twice a month, maybe once a month? And we could maybe then work with that expenditure going down, um, since the service wouldn't be needed as frequently throughout the month?
Uh, I'm sure if that's the, the pleasure of the mayor and the, the council, that we could approach them in negotiation to see if they, how they felt about that.
Yeah, mine through the.
Yeah.
Through the chair. Kevin, so, 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 and I'm sorry, wa- walk me through one more time. So, so they pick up the green bin, right? And they take it to like an incinerator?
Yes, in Broward County.
Okay.
Wheel operator, I think is the name.
And then what?
And they, they burn it.
They, they burn what's contaminated?
They burn almost everything that can be burned. I think the metals are removed, and I think everything else is burnt, and that's part, that's called a merchant plant, I believe, under the law. The, it, the electricity is uh, kind of used by the government or sold into the system.
Great. And then, and then um, and you're saying that tonnage, that, that per ton cost is, it's, it's less than what we pay for our solid waste today?
Yeah, remarkably, we, if you had asked me a year ago, I thought we would be out of the recycling business and that where we were headed, just as you said. You're exactly right where we were going. And they came to the table with an entirely new program that cut the costs, so we stayed with it.
Kevin, and can we, so, can we talk about just moving the whole business to them? I mean, what would that look like? You see what I'm saying? If, if the cost is cheaper, right, per ton, um, than, than if we were to give them all the business, including solid waste, can we get, can we leverage that to get even a better deal?
So there are two components. There's two components to uh, picking up and then disposing. So our other contracts that are here are with um, waste connections. And they pick up maybe eighty-eight uh, a million tons as opposed to seven million, and they dispose of it in their um, uh, dump sites.
Got it.
So we had, I, I don't know that all those materials are suitable for um, waste-to-energy. I just don't have the information.
Okay.
Through the chair, if you're done, sir.
Yes.
Through the chair. Kevin, we need to make this as clear as possible. This contract with coastal waste is indeed, what they pick up in the green bins in the city of Hialeah is indeed going to a recycling plant. Yes or no? It is a recycling, it is recycling. It is not going like it used to go to the regular dump site where general household garbage would go. This is going to a recycling.
Last year, it goes to a recycling facility.
I, I, I clearly remember that. So this is true recycling. Whether it's incinerated and used for energy or other materials are recycled and used to make new products. This is a recycling plant. This is true recycling now, as best as it can be. Sure. If something is put in the green bin that has no use one way or another, that's always gonna happen, and it probably happens in every city in the United States, but the discussion last year was, why do we have this if it's going to the same dump site? But that isn't the case anymore. It is going to a recycling plant, and it is, for the most part, whatever is recyclable is being recycled, sorted and recycled, either incinerated or turned into a product that can make new material, recycle it into new material. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so this is true recycling now.
Under the way the state defines it, yeah, this is exactly what the law, one of the things.
And although other cities have moved away from that, it would be in compliance. We would be in compliance with being a city that recycles its uh, waste, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Through the chair. Kevin, does our other uh, the other company, do they have recycling? Is it, are we moving to another, a second company because they don't offer recycling?
So uh, to the best of my knowledge, a decade ago or so, these two companies, one did recycling and the other did um, typical.
Garbage.
Garbage, but uh, believe it or not, that was on the pickup side. So we had uh, waste connections on one side picking up normal trash and then the recyclable for coastal. There was a long period of time, all of that material was going to waste connections, and it was going into uh, a dump, basically. I think all the way from the time of, of COVID on, but I'm sorry, I lost track of your first question.
Oh, oh, it was just, does Waste Connections offer recycling where we would have one master contract for all of our?
I do remember when we were trying to get a, a different arrangement last year. They do it. It's, it's really, and I think they'll tell you this extraordinarily expensive. I think it's close to a hundred and forty dollars uh, underneath, and it, and their county contract, I believe is a hundred and forty dollars per ton, whereas this is sixty-eight.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Through the chair. So we're getting a deal with this company. It seems like from what the other companies offer as prices to haul away and process recycling, this is a deal, a good deal, in your opinion?
Absolutely. I never expected a year ago that we'd be doing recycling today, and I didn't think they would ever match the price, and yet both those things happened.
But it is a good deal at this point. Yes.
Very good, sir.
If I may, through the chair?
Yes.
Kevin, can you repeat what you said, that the state has like a requirement on recycling?
And I might not get it uh, perfectly, but the state does require local communities to have a recycling program. I don't know the details of that. Uh, at some point years ago, they amended it to include waste-to-energy plants as part of a recycling program. Um, but I, I did make uh, mention of the fact that during COVID, almost everybody stopped recycling. Several communities have not restarted, but the state, to my knowledge, is not pressing their case against them. They could, though.
Good. Alright, thank you.
Anyone else?
Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Can I have a?
Second?
Sorry. I got a first and a second. Thank you.
Mr. Zogby?
Yes.
Ms. De la Vega?
Yes.
Mr. Junco?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Tundidor?
Yes.
Motion carries, the item is approved.
Thank you. Do we have another item?
Yes, consent item W, proposed resolution authorizing the mayor, her designee and the city clerk as a testing witness on behalf of the city to issue and execute purchase orders to Waste Connections of Florida Incorporated for the purchase of collection of household garbage, yard and bulk waste for a total amount not to exceed nine million, nine hundred thousand dollars. And disposal of solid waste collection for a total amount not to exceed six million, seven hundred thousand dollars. And disposal of construction debris for a total amount not to exceed sixty thousand dollars. Approving the total community expenditure in an amount not to exceed sixteen million, six hundred and sixty thousand dollars and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Uh, through the chair.
Yes, sir.
Um, I'm specifically uh, inquiring about the section in this item and this expenditure that talks about the removal and the disposition of construction debris. From the administration, I'd like to hear if this, is this about a hundred and seventh avenue? Uh, west, northwest a hundred and seventh avenue where there is a illegal trash site all the way up and down a hundred and seventh avenue? Is this the construction debris we're talking about in this contract? Um, this question is for the administration.
A contract for garbage pickup.
Go ahead.
This is a contract for garbage pickup.
The construction degree, uh, debris removal, what is that? Mr. Lidsky, this question for now is for the administration.
I'm gonna let him answer about the contract.
Well, okay, but I really wanted an answer from you.
He's gonna enter.
Each year, we bring three contracts uh, to the council concerning um, waste connections. The first is for pickup and that's all the trash pickup throughout the city. The second is for disposal and those are very large contracts. They total of uh, nearly sixteen million dollars. The small sixty thousand dollar amount is just for material that the city government produces itself throughout the year. And we need special pickup. This sixty thousand uh, was not dedicated to a hundred and seventh avenue. It's actually uh, put in there each year for the city's uh, direct material.
Understood. Uh, further comments or further questions is, what's happening with a hundred and seventh avenue? There was a press conference about that. We're gonna clean it up. I drove by there two days ago and it's worse than ever.
Okay.
It looked like an ancillary dump site. So where, was there money employed to clean that up?
There was money.
Been cleaned up?
There was money from Commissioner Rene Garcia, Commissioner um-
Well, it hasn't been used.
The county just recently let us know that they're gonna take over because the street belongs to them and they're gonna finish it.
The street belongs to them, but the, the side of the street, the property that is not street, that is not right of way, belongs to us. I thought, I understood that-
It does not belong to us. It belongs to Hialeah Gardens.
No, it does not. Perhaps you don't know the geography, madam interim mayor of the city. The west side of a hundred and seventh belongs to Hialeah, I'm speaking, thank you. The west side of a hundred and seventh avenue, the west side of the road, not the road, belongs to Hialeah Gardens. The east side, where all the dumping is being done, belongs to us. People are asking me, why hasn't that been cleaned up yet? It is worse than ever. Do you have an answer for that?
Is Jose here?
Jose is not our public works uh, person.
Uh, no, but the, the cleanup he was doing. And we had paused because we had ran out of the funds. We dumped two hundred tons. And we were gonna get more funds. We were gonna continue the pe- pickup. We were gonna put it on our site to then take it. And that's why I'm asking further, um, Jose.
Hello.
Hello.
Is Mari Montreal, Chief Operating Officer of the city. So um, we have picked up over forty thousand dollars or disposed uh, of over forty thousand dollars of trash uh, from both Hialeah Gardens and Hialeah. Have been doing the pickup and the county has been assisting with the disposal. So when uh, the area of Hialeah Heights was annexed, in the um, in the exchange of street access, the county specifically in their contract noted that a hundred and seventh and a hundred and seventieth, because they have access to other highways, like eventually I ninety, I seventy-five and the turnpike. They want it not just the roadway, but also the um, the sides of the road would be um, county property. So they have um, they have taken responsibility for helping us pick up the trash.
Well-
I hope that answers-
Thank you. That's an unsatisfactory response. There was a press conference stating that we were going to pick up that trash along, and that is city of Hialeah property, yet it is worse than ever. That is an unsatisfactory response. Uh, it has not been picked up. So I, I wanted the administration to answer that question.
Jose's online. He's saying he's asking to be unmuted.
Jose, can you, there you go. Jose?
Hi, good evening. Uh, Jose Sanchez, Director of Streets. Sorry, couldn't be there. I'm recovering from a surgery.
He's muted, he's muted himself? Jose, you're muted through here.
Do you hear me? Do you guys hear me?
So we can't hear Jose?
Hello, do you guys hear me?
No, not yet.
Jose? Do you hear me now?
Not yet.
You guys hear me?
Nope.
No? Hello? Good evening. You guys hear me? Let me try to go back in.
No.
No? About now? You don't hear me? You still don't hear me?
He's saying that he's gonna log out and log back in, cause I'm reading the caption.
Good evening, do you hear me now?
Yes.
All right, good evening, Jose Sanchez, Director of Streets. Sorry, I couldn't be there today. I'm recovering from surgery. We, we did pick up, we started the pickup of one oh seven. We had a certain allowance from Miami Dade County, so we teamed up with, with um, Hialeah Gardens. And we did the initial cleanup, which was, which ended more or less up to a hundred and fourth street. We stopped there because we exhausted the funds that we're, that were allocated for that. And the mayor's office was negotiating a new deal for additional funds. We did some additional pickup, uh, momentary pickup, but now the rest of the pickup, it's being taken over by Miami Dade County. Now, as far as what falls within Hialeah and Hialeah Gardens, the west side, it's all Hialeah Gardens. The east side, part of it, roughly up to a little bit north of one forty-five, which is where there's a curve, the east side is Hialeah territory. But it's um, the road itself is Miami Dade County right of way. So the road is owned by Miami Dade County, owned and maintained by Miami Dade County. Now, north of that one forty-five mark or so, where that curve is, that curve that, that pushes the road, the temporary road west, that makes all the east suel, um, for lack of a better term, the, the green area to the east of the road, most of that, like the first ten or fifteen feet are within Hialeah Gardens territory. So it's not a perfect line, cause the road is not perfectly aligned with the section line of the, of that area. But up to one forty, one, a little bit like one forty-five or so, um, that case that you mentioned, uh, Zogby. Yes, the east side falls within Hialeah territory, but north of that curve, the, the east side is still part of Hialeah Gardens territory.
Thank you, through the chair.
Yes, sir.
The Hialeah Gardens territory looks pretty clean. West. I, I'm not sure what you're saying, and I, believe me, I understand the geography there. The east side of that road, the road does belong to the county. The east side of the road, and by your specific words, we, 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 we cleaned up. So the east side of a hundred and seventh, the roadside, the green area belongs to us. We were supposed to have cleaned that up already. I don't wanna hear any projecting that the county, the county this. The, the garbage is not being dumped on the roadway. It's being drunk, dumped in the green area that belongs to us. A promise was made that that was gonna be cleaned up, all of it was gonna be picked up and it's worse than ever. The promise was not delivered. That is horrible what's going on over there. And uh, we're not doing our job. And uh, the administration said they were gonna do their job, but they haven't done their job. And now they're trying to project it onto the county or onto Hialeah Gardens. Hialeah Gardens side looks great. The roadway is clear. It's our side that continues to be a super gigantic dump site. All the way from a hundred and thirty-eight to a hundred and forty-fifth street or whatever. And as you said, Jose, that part belongs to us. That green area belongs to us. So the city is not doing their job. And I don't know what to tell the residents who ask me why we're not cleaning that area up. That was my question.
Now, let me clarify. South of one forty-two, or no, no, I'm sorry, like one forty-five-ish. I, I don't know the exact, there's no road in that area. There's a curve on one oh seven. The road south of that is primarily on the east side of the section line. Then, north of that, the road is completely on the west side of the section line. The section line is the dividing point between the two cities. Now, the section line is also the center line of the Miami Dade County a hundred and seventh avenue right of way. So north of that curve, even though the suel is on the east, is continued to be on the east, that part of the east, most of that suel, a good part of that suel, falls within Hialeah Gardens. So just cause it's on the east side, on the east suel, doesn't necessarily mean that it's on City of Hialeah territory. We got like probably ten to fifteen feet, I can't give you the exact amount, before it becomes Hialeah. Like the Hialeah part in that area, it's overgrown. I mean, there's, um, there's probably, there's probably debris there. We don't know. I mean, it's totally overgrown, but the area immediately to the east of that road, north of one forty-five or so, that still, is still within Hialeah Gardens territory. Cause that's um, that's the part that the whole entire road is on Hialeah Gardens territory.
I commend you for that wonderful word salad. So I'll give you, which I disagree with. From one forty-five, wherever you say the curve is, I understand. I know the area perfectly. I used to patrol that area. But south of that to one thirty-eight street, on the east side of a hundred and seven, that is ours. And it is a dump site. I don't see any difference, although it was promised to be cleaned up and it has not been cleaned up. So Jose, I guess since you've volunteered to answer this, is that ours to clean up? The green area, south of whatever you call it, one forty-fifth, the curve, one forty-second, all the way to one thirty-eight. Is that our side that is full of dumping? Is that ours to clean up?
In my professional opinion, none of it is our responsibility to clean up. The whole road is owned and maintained by Miami Dade County, the, the fact that-
The green area is not ours. So we went out, the administration went out and did a press conference. Was it deceptive then? That we were gonna clean it up? I don't understand. In your professional opinion, geography is geography. So we don't own anything east of the actual roadway?
The entire roadway is-
We shouldn't get involved. Then we shouldn't get involved. Then we should just tell whoever asks, well, that's the county, call them. Is that the case?
We went in there as a mutual agreement between the three parties. I mean, I don't think the city should bear the entire cost of that as a city. I mean, we're here to serve the public and if it's an issue, I would, you know, as long as the other entities that have some um, let's call it stakeholders, they, they have to res- some responsibility. They should share the cost with us. But in my professional opinion, we shouldn't even have to handle that. I mean, the whole entire road, then northwest a hundred and seventh avenue is a Miami Dade County right of way. There should be no need for us to, to maintain that, just like any other road, like forty-ninth street. Now, unless we have an agreement that requires us to maintain it, we shouldn't have.
So we shouldn't have promised, so we, then we shouldn't have promised the public that we were gonna clean it up. That's, that's my point. Whatever your professional opinion seems to be, we promised the public we were gonna clean it up. And if that wasn't the case, we shouldn't have promised the public something that is not within our authority or purview to clean up. And that's why I was asking the question. Now, I don't know whose responsibility it is. If it's not ours and it's the counties where they're not doing it, so we shouldn't have gotten involved. That's my point. I asked a question. I don't have an answer. All I know is the garbage is still there.
I'm not gonna get into the politics of it, um-
There is no politics. It is, it is a matter of geography.
I mean, the reason we went out there, I mean, we, for years, have been arguing the same thing, that it's not our responsibility. It's, it blew up. So for the first time in many years, the county agreed to provide us a landfill. We agreed, like I've, since the, probably twenty twenty-one, I've been telling the county that I would provide the manpower and the equipment, as long as they let us uh, give us a, a site, one other landfills to do, dispose of the debris. Now is when they agreed to do that and that's why we went in there and did some of that cleanup. Once we ran out of that, out of those funds, that's it. We stopped it momentarily. We restarted again, little by little, until the county decided to take over. But I mean, it's something that we've held our position strong over the years. And now for the first time is when the county actually agreed to provide us the landfill, which it was a cumulative effort between all three parties. You know, it affects Hialeah Gardens, it affects the city and it's a county right of way. So for the first time in many years, we finally got collaboration and that's why we decided to move forward with the, with the cleanup. I mean, and that's all I could say.
Them providing a landfill is one thing and who is responsible for the cleanup is another thing. And the administration promised the public that they were gonna, that we were gonna clean it up, but it hasn't been cleaned up. So there's no, there's no other way around that. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may, through the chair?
Yes.
Jose, I ju- I just wanna run through some things you said. Um, first of all, you said the funds were used up already. What were the funds used for exactly?
We had a disposal allowance in the county landfill. We've exhausted that. Between what Hialeah Gardens and, and our team did, we've already exhausted through those funds that were allocated for that disposal.
So from what you're seeing, the county agreed to help, but then that was the help, that was the expiration, a certain timeline to use their landfill. It was-
No, it was a certain amount. I mean, cause uh, according to the county, they cannot waive the disposal fees. So they gave us an allowance to dispose. So once that got exhausted, we momentarily stopped operations, the cleaning operations, which at that point, I think we were up to a hundred and fourth street. We started on a hundred and thirty-eight street and we were able to get with the funds that, the, I mean, the allowance that the county um, provided, we were able to get to a hundred and fourth street, with the exception of the tires. We're, we're isolating the tires, cause they're like double the cost of the disposal.
Yeah, that was one of my next questions. Did they allow you to dispose the tires? Um, so the- Um, so the county agreed to help and participate. Um, in what capacity and was there something in like written form? Is this just like a pinky promise? Was there anything written down that like made them have some teeth in, in this fight and cleaning this up?
They provided us a memo with the allowance and uh, the, the drivers took that with them until we exhausted it. And that was pretty much it on, on our end. Uh, Hialeah Gardens and my team handled all the, the pickup. We provided the manpower, the, the equipment and the county only provided the landfill for the disposal.
So as of right now, the, the project is paused on that street?
The county is, uh, to my understanding, the county is cleaning up some of that area. I have not been able to drive through there this last week because I'm, I'm recovering from surgery like I mentioned before, but um, to my understanding, they're, they're doing some cleanup.
But some or all that, that pertains to them on the side of the street that they agreed is their side of the street?
Well, the whole thing is theirs. A hundred and seventh avenue is a hundred percent Miami Dade County owned and maintained.
So they agree that they're going to clean up that entire street is what I'm getting at? That they're going to finish the whole project from one start of the street to the other side or no?
To my understanding, yes, but I've not been in those negotiations.
All right. Thank you, sir. I appreciate it and I hope you feel better soon.
Thank you.
Through the chair.
Yes.
We voted last, uh, uh, last meeting to provide a five hundred dollar reward to anybody who would report illegal dumping. That to me, uh, extrapolates to the fact that we have authority over that green area where the dumping is being done. But I guess nobody in this administration could give me the correct answer and I know the correct answer. That's our land. But as far as item W is concerned in the resolution, I pulled it so I can ask what the construction debris, what that cost added to this waste removal for construction debris was going to be, whether that was part of the hundred and seventh avenue. But I've got a clear answer. No. That has nothing to do with clo- with cleaning up a hundred and seventh avenue. And up till now, a hundred and seventh avenue is up in the air and everybody's washing their hands of the responsibility. So as far as uh, item W of the resolution, I motion.
We have a motion? Can I have a second? Please take role.
Mr. Junco?
Yes.
Ms. Elavega?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Tundidor?
Yes.
Mr. Zagby?
Yes.
Motion carries. The item is approved.
Next item.
Administrative item A. Second reading and public hearing of proposed ordinance approving the lease agreement between the City of Hialeah and City of Hialeah Education Academy Incorporated for land owned and operated by the, by the City of Hialeah. Located at twenty-five ninety west seventy-sixth street, Hialeah, Florida, for a period not to exceed fifty years. Together with such rights and duties as more fully described in the lease agreement. A copy of which is attached here to immediate part hereof as exhibit A. Authorizing the mayor and the city clerk as attesting witness on behalf of the city to enter into the lease agreement. Repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing penalties for violation hereof, providing for severability clause and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Item's open for second reading. It is open for the public.
Mr. Council President. And I just may for the record, just briefly, I, I think this has been stated before, but um, this is a lease of city property. Um, under Florida statutes, one sixty-six point oh two one. Cities have all home rule powers and that includes all corporate powers and that includes a power to lease. Under the city charter, it expressly recognizes the ability to sell or lease city property, but it has to be done by ordinance. And this is being done by an ordinance. Uh, there is an obscure section of the Dade County Charter that talks about getting county approval when you sell, that is sell. Outright convey a very large, uh, multi-acre tract of city-owned land. But again, this is simply a lease. This is not a sale. So I just wanted to put all that on the record just to be clear.
Okay, thank you. Any comments? Damon Adams?
Jose Ali, seven eighty-eight, saw the East Park Drive. Again, the attorney is being very fuzzy. This attorney is being very fuzzy because he, he, we were promised over and over that the residents are going to be able to use the park. I gave you the copy of Miami Dade County School. We share the property with Babcock Bright, all those parks, we share it, not this one. This one's totally different. My question to you, the, the city council, the attorney, the mayor. Are the residents going to be able to use this property for fifty years? Why is this different than with Miami Dade School? And, and city attorney, why did you write a resolution allowing the city to use the gymnasium until twenty twenty-eight? When the gymnasium is not going to be finished until twenty twenty-nine? You fuzzy the whole area. Plus, we gave them, he never talked about the, we gave him the building at, at park. We gave him parts of, of Bucky Dent. In that resolution, we gave him parts of two other parks. This is all very fuzzy and the city attorney to be crystal clear. Why did he give us permission to use the gym till twenty twenty-eight only? And, and the gym won't be built to twenty twenty-nine and why all this fuzziness? And why wasn't it included in the ordinance that the residents could use the park? Why do we have to ask permission to use a park where we've been paying taxes since the city was incorporated?
Perhaps suffice it to say, I'm not a spokesperson for parks and certainly not for Cohia, but the use agreement is a three-year thing. The city has many use agreements. The use agreement is not dissimilar from various use agreements that parks has with many different organizations to use facilities. It came to the council frankly because of the importance of it and because it's up to three years. Uh, the lease agreement has to do with the school campus and that's different. So, all right?
Yeah, it's being fuzzy again. The ordinance is for fifty years. When we, when we use Dade County Schools, it's very clear in the ordinance, in the, in the, it says we could use the park. All right. We've been talking about other issues about the trash and all that. That's important. Next year, that's not going to be important. For the next fifty years, the residents around Slay Park are not going to be able to use Slay Park unless Cohia is nice enough to let them use the park. All I'm asking you, if, if Mr. Arza's presentation was correct, he's going to share the park included in the ordinance. After school, the residents can use the park. It's very simple. I know this attorney is going to give a complicated question. This attorney is going to get up and he's not going to answer your question, Ms. Melinda. Your question was very clear, very simple. Can the residents use the park for the next sixty years legally? Can the resident use the park or do we need special permission? This is when Mr. Arza is going to say, well, he's not going to answer you and he's going to say, we're going to follow the ordinance. So please be very clear with that. Nobody does not want Cohia to use our park, nobody. All we're asking is please share it. We've been paying taxes for a hundred years. So make that real clear because once it's in, you approve that ordinance, we're going to have to file lawsuits and we're not going to win that lawsuit because it's black and white and the city attorney is not being honest.
One Santana, fifty-six oh one, West Tenth Avenue. Um, you know, after, you know, let me tell you something. I, I want the school to grow. I've always said that. I want the school to grow. I think the school is an amazing thing. I wish they would have gave more reports of what's coming out of it, you know, from several years that it's been open. Uh, regarding, you know, more police or more fire, uh, just, just to know. At the same time, um, you know, after doing, just doing some more research regarding this stuff. Do you know that it's not common practice to be leasing properties for fifty, ninety years? Right? And then literally there's even two state statutes and I'm going to put this in the record right now. So I'm giving you all notices when you, when you want to vote on this, okay? It says it very clear. One six three point three eight zero and also one six six point zero five. You cannot lease public land for an excessive amount of time, like fifty years without following strict productions and compliance bidding and uh, appraisals and even sometimes voting participation. Okay? So I'm letting you know right now. Whoever votes for this, we're violating this law. And if you want to ask the attorney that likes to fluff things up all the time, right? Then go ahead and ask the attorney, please counsel personnel. So, all right, sir, you're not going to interrupt my time. I have a minute and thirty seconds, okay? Please ask the attorney these questions, okay? Because honestly, in my opinion, I don't think the public should use the, the, the school, right? It's a security issue. You're dealing with kids, okay? And at the end of the day, you got to ask yourself the question, who has more money? Colia as its own now organization or the City of Hialeah? This is a liability issue for the city. I don't think the public should use it. Of course, Pepper wants the public to use it. And I agree with him as well, but me, if I had a child there, I don't want the public to come i- in the afternoon. And you know, it creates a problem, you know? And there's even police reports in the past of other individuals that have come to me and tell me Santana. I go there to show my kids to play baseball and the police comes and chases them out because it's a school area and I, and I understand the concerns, okay? So again, guys, I already gave you guys notice. Please do the right thing.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Comments, questions?
Keep on, thank you.
And then we're going to answer the question.
Hi, good evening. This is the first time I ever talk here. I'm usually sitting in the back and there's all this animosity towards attorneys.
Name an address for the record, please.
I forgot about that. Abdul Jimenez, twenty-nine hundred West twelve Avenue, Street Nineteen. So it's a lot easier to talk from up there than over here. It's like, it takes a lot of courage to stand over here. And when I was up there in the planning and zoning board, I remember when Mr. Arza sold this idea to us. And a lot of the members were against it, especially Eddie Santiago Esteban. He says absolutely not. And I was not against it. I was open to it. I, I started researching Cohia online. I see there's a waiting list. It seems like a great school. And afterwards, we, we approved it, but we were sold on the idea that the residents would be able to use the park, the gymnasium, the areas of Cohia. And my biggest concern during that time is like, what if later on they say no? Do we have that in writing? And I remember the c- city attorney at the time, which wasn't Rafael, it was his assistant. And Mr. Arza says, well, we're going to do agreements and documents and contracts and whatnot. And I didn't like it because as an attorney, although it seems tonight they're hated. Um, I, I'm very cautious and unless I get it in writing, I don't believe what you promised me. So now, I, I came here, I mean, because Mr. Ozzy, I promised him that I would talk here. And maybe I regret it, I don't know, but the residents are caring about this. And it feels like they're being short-changed in the sense that, like you said, it was, it's only for five years. And now I realize that it's not going to be constructed until twenty twenty-nine. And they're getting fifty years. So it seems, I understand why Mr. Rafael is saying that resolutions could be done like, like Ozzy says fuzzy, but why not include it in the ordinance itself? We're giving Cohia, which is a great school, fifty years. Well, let the residents use it for fifty years. I understand Santana has concerns about, you know, security issues. But if it's after hours and there's control, then it might work out. But at least have the residents have the opportunity to be able to use the gym. The way this is written, it seems a little deceitful in the sense that there's no written guarantees that the residents of Hialeah will be able to use the park. Uh, the park areas have been taken away. So if we could be fair to the residents, I, I wouldn't encourage you to include that into a resolution. When I visited the area, because I'm not really from that area, I noticed on the map that is a huge concrete. Like it's all concrete jungle and there's no trees and Cohia is like a little oasis, uh, the Slay Park. So let's try to help the residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Okay, Mr. Attorney, can you please answer the question?
Yes, uh, I'll be happy to. So, uh, Florida statute one sixty-six oh four five, which was a statute that was quoted, is a statute that has to do with the city buying property and requiring a certain appraisals if the city is buying property. And the period of confidentiality for such appraisals and so forth, it's simply not applicable to this situation because again, it has to do with purchases of property by the city and appraisals. Um, all I can repeat is that Florida law clearly in a Florida statute says it's a home rule power of the city to do anything that a corporation can do, which includes leasing property. And the city charter expressly gives you the ability to, um, lease city property as, as this council has done at other times in the past. And uh, to again, remove any confusion whatsoever, as I thought was pointed out earlier. The use agreement is a short-term thing for certain city facilities, uh, which has to do with the police substation. Certain uh, classrooms there, Bucky Dent Park, uh, certain areas there, Wild Park, Melander Park, Slay Park only for two classrooms, athletic director offices and recreational room uses overflow until other facilities are used. It's a short-term agreement. It was done by resolution as is typical for use agreements. Leases by city charter require uh, an ordinance and um, I, again, I'm not seeking to speak for Cohia. Uh, they, they have a representative here who will speak, but the lease really only concerns uh, the area of the school and the school campuses, hopefully. Uh, council will point out. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Mr. Arza.
Good evening.
Name and address?
Seven oh one Brickell Avenue, uh, Hugo Arza, though clearly I don't have to give my name tonight. It's been mentioned plenty of times. Um, so let me, uh, first of all, I want to recognize, I mean, our principal is here and we have some other members of Cohia. But you heard from them at first reading, they spoke during public, uh, comment in first reading and candidly, you know, I think you're going to hear, you would hear the same message. So I, I, I've asked them to just let me try and address some of the questions that have come up, that continue to come up. I'll try and be unfuzzy. Um, I don't know how else to say, um, clearly and unequivocally. And I think I did answer Councilwoman Del Vega's comment last time and I, I based that on the fact that after she asked her question and I answered it, she voted favorably in first reading. So my, my guess is had I not answered the question, um, she would have followed up or asked me to clarify something. What the attorney said at the end, so for the, for the school buildings, um, your lease is covering the school buildings, much like the city today doesn't utilize the existing school buildings. The school buildings with the exception of the gym, and I'm going to touch on that specifically in a second, will be utilized for school purposes. At, inside those buildings, there would be no public access, much as Mr. Santana said. Um, for safety, security reasons, right? They're, they are public schools and, and none of us would usually want to have the co-mingling of just, you know, anybody just showing up or walking into a, a school where, where the children from this community attend. Um, but I, I think I, I'm, I'm at a loss for words, but it's not going to stop me from trying to explain how somehow we are keeping people from Slay Park. I, I, I don't, I don't really understand that. So, um, the commitment that we made back in January was again, unequivocally clear. We will, Cohia will construct at its cost improvements to that southern softball field. There were two softball fields, that southern softball field, improve it with pickleball courts, soccer pitch and the like. And that will be constructed for the city and that will be part of Slay Park. Cohia will not utilize that unless they lease it out in the evening because they've got an after school, like they may lease out some other park facility of any type. Meaning that that portion there, which today is fairly underutilized as an additional softball field, will contain improvements that this community will be able to utilize at seven, eight o'clock in the morning when that park opens until it closes at night. Irrespective of the fact that the school buildings have their operations going on. So just to be abundantly clear, no one is being kept from that portion. If anything, Cohia is constructing improvements that will be expensive to build. Uh, pickleball courts, soccer pitches, uh, like a walkway around, all of that will be constructed at their cost. And that will be on city land and it will be part of Slay Park. And any of you, any residents can go utilize that at whatever time in accordance with whatever the park regulations are. Hope that that clarifies that point. I mean, there's nobody being kept from utilizing that area.
I'm clear.
Let's talk about the gym. Let's remember back to January. There was a request that the gym, which again is being constructed by Cohia, be made available to the public. Part of that discussion stemmed around the fact that obviously the school today utilizes a gym across town at Bucky Dent because it's the gym that they have available to them. They won't need to do that. It will free up that gym. But Cohia willingly agreed and your use agreement, your attorney's explained, your, your use agreement contains those dates and times. And I went through it last time, but you know, we'll go through it again. The, the gym will be utilized, the city shall have use rights of the gym. Maybe this is what Mr. Ozzy is referring to, that they, that, that the city is going to utilize the Cohia space and, and I guess he's right. They will. Weekdays from, on Wednesdays and Fridays from five thirty to nine thirty, weekends all day. And, you know, the city can, can And you know, the city can, can speak to Kohia if they want anything above that. Again, that was what this, that was what the Mr. Ozzy, I didn't interrupt you. I didn't interrupt you, sir. Please, that, let, let me, um, if you, if you could, Mr. President, it's very difficult.
Please, Ozzy, please let him speak. I'm not gonna let you speak.
Additionally, in the summer months during recess or winter recess or wherever the case may be, the gym will be made available a hundred percent of the time to the city. Monday through Friday from seven AM to nine thirty PM, Saturdays and Sundays. So basically meaning when school's not in session, that gym will be an additional city gymnasium all the time. City can lease it out in accordance with its own lease terms, can run what, whatever they, they choose to do there. The next section, which I already talked on, the soccer fields, pickleball courts and synthetic track located in Carlisle Park shall be reserved for the city's use. Um, Kohia may access them only in accordance with, with a schedule that the parks department, the city would agree to, meaning that if, you know, Kohia ends up with a pickleball team or something and they want to use those courts after school, they can lease that space out. Much like another pickleball team could do so, or a group of residents could do so. So, um, I, I will dignify Mr. Ozzy's interruption by saying your attorney explained clearly that the use agreement is meant to be shorter term duration because there's a lot of things in it that will go away as construction of the gymnasium occurs. And as we construct the additional buildings, the classroom space that we have in, in other locations that, that Kohia has, the use of Bucky Dent, all of that would, wouldn't be necessary to put in a use agreement anymore because once our facilities are constructed, the school will be able to utilize its facilities to the full extent of what it, it, what it's built and we'll be able to enjoy those without having to, to utilize the other um, facilities that the city has, that they pay for, that they lease out from the city and pay to utilize. The, the use agreements tend to be shorter in duration. The commitment, however, for providing the use of the gymnasium is carried forth. And I'm sorry if this is unfuzzy. I will try and make it as unfuzzy as possible. That commitment is part of an ordinance that this council approved back in January. That commitment will travel with whatever goes on at this property for as long as this lease is in place. For fifty years, whatever the case may be. The use agreement is shorter because a lot of those uses are gonna fluctuate. But that use agreement, when a new use agreement is entered into, will simply carry forward if there are additional needs that Kohia may have at other facilities. And we'll continue to memorialize the fact that the city has the, the hours and the times that I've read that gymnasium used for. The lease agreement further protects the city by stating very clearly, again, in section thirteen of the lease agreement, that in addition to compliance with all applicable laws and regulations involving charter school, tenants shall abide and comply with all laws, codes, ordinances, ordinances, rules and regulations enacted by those governmental entities, whether federal, state, county or municipal, that would be ordinances by this city. Um, having jurisdiction over the property or the premises. Okay, so the premises are defined as that gymnasium. If you look at the definition of premises, it includes the buildings of the gymnasium. And that obviously failure to do any of that would be a material breach of this lease. So if Kohia decides in year five or ten or twenty or forty nine, kinda tired of the city using the gym during these days or times, we're just not gonna let them do it anymore. They'd be a material breach. And, and your city could take action at that point in time, whenever the, the, they take that, um, step. They're not going to do that. I think we all know how, um, they've operated for the nearly seventeen, eighteen years that they've been there and will continue to operate. But you have the protection in your lease agreement that it would be a breach of your lease agreement if Kohia did not honor the ordinance that was adopted by this council that included that use. And my, my guess is that when a new use agreement is entered into at some point in the future, when other facilities become available and the, and the school doesn't need the gymnasium at Bucky Dent and doesn't need the additional classrooms and doesn't need some of that stuff, there'll be a new use agreement for any additional facilities that Kohia may want to utilize from the city for which they'll pay for. And it will continue to carry forth this obligation. But even if the use agreement didn't carry forward that obligation, it's baked into your lease agreement. It is an obligation that Kohia undertook and they can't walk away from. I hope that is as unfuzzy as we can get. That is not something we can change unilaterally. We would either have to have the city agree that we no longer have to do that, or we would have to continue to comply, which of course is our intent. So no one is taking or prohibiting residents from utilizing those park areas. If anything, Kohia is improving the pickleball and, and soccer pitches and the like. And to Mr. Jimenez, who sat on the planning and zoning board, I will note that the project that got his favorable vote and the favorable vote of that planning and zoning board actually impacted that northern softball field. If, to remind all of you, when we got here, we had a recommendation of approval from P and Z, even impacting that northern softball field. And thanks to the dialogue, the discourse, the deferral wrapped over the holidays, because we ended up getting this approved in January, this council candidly extracted a more favorable.
Ozzy, I promise I won't let you talk.
Uh, extracted a more favorable, um, result, I think ultimately for the residents, that northern softball field was preserved. The school didn't go into that area, so that field was preserved. And the southern softball field, which has a portion of the gym and then all of these pickleball and, and soccer pitch improvements, those soccer ball, those soccer field and, and pickleball improvements are going to be constructed and given to the city. Kohia will not own them, will only be able to utilize them if they lease them out. And the gymnasium, again, thanks to the collective efforts of this council's favorable vote, was able to secure the dates and times that I've identified. So, um, I, I, I don't know. I mean, I'm happy to answer additional questions. I, I think it's fairly clear. Um, no one's trying to hide the ball at all. Um, if you're gonna let Mr. Ozzy speak, I'm sorry, Mr. President, I'll have to reserve some time. It's unorthodox to let people go back and forth. I mean, he's not, but, um, if he's gonna make another comment because.
Gotcha. Well, I'm pretty clear on, on your presentation. I mean, I did my research from the beginning of it, so I'm clear.
Mr. Council President, just if I, if I may, just, I would just want to point out one sentence in the lease. Because maybe we've been talking about things that to me are, are evident, but, uh, in uh, C of the lease in, uh, section one C, it, it says in part, I'm only gonna read this part. Tenant may not use other municipal facilities without having a separate use agreement as applicable and without paying a separate consideration for the use of such facilities as applicable. So this lease has to do with that, what's described in the lease and what's attached in exhibit A, which is shown.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you. Ozzy, very short, uh, like thirty seconds and the council's gonna speak.
Okay. So again, my, my prophecy, Mr. Arda Fafouda, so the attorney, he's being very fuzzy, very, right? It's very clear legally after the year twenty twenty eight, the resident will not be allowed to use the gymnasium unless Kohia is nice enough. Now, Mr. Our city attorney is being fuzzy. It's a very simple question. Legally, after twenty twenty eight, the residents cannot use the, because the lease expires in twenty twenty eight. If Kohia wants to be nice and then you use the field, the gym, they can, but they don't have to. Again, Mr. Arda fulfilled the prophecy I said. He danced around all the issues, but after the year twenty twenty eight, okay, the lease expired. Okay, hold on, hold on. The lease expires in twenty, wait, 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 but let me.
Ten seconds.
Let me wrap it up. The lease expires, the, the, the ordinance expires in the year twenty seventy nine. The lease agreement expires twenty twenty eight. That means from twenty twenty eight to twenty seventy nine, forty six years.
Thank you.
The city cannot use it unless Kohia, and he won't answer that question. And the city attorney is not helping. He's making it more confusing.
Ozzy, I'm clear. So actually, we're close for comments and questions with Ozzy there. Uh, you, you wanna bring?
Yeah, no, I, I don't, I feel like I've been, but Twilight. That's exactly what I didn't say. I don't know how else to be clear. Your lease contains our commitment made to this board in that ordinance.
Hugo, the, the presentation you did months ago.
I, I, I understand, but I, like I said, I, I, so no one is, and I don't take personal umbrage, fuzzy. I've been called a lot worse. Um, I don't take umbrage at that, but I don't know that I could be any clearer that your lease agreement requires us to comply with our commitment to you um, to utilize that gymnasium and no, the city won't have to come and ask for permission for it, nor will Kohia have to be nice for it. It is a, it is, it is a legal obligation.
Trust me, as a city councilman, I did my research with this months before. Thank you.
I'm happy to answer any other questions the council may have.
Any comments or questions from the council, please?
Yeah, I just, ju- just for clarification through the chair, uh, Hugo, um, just want to make sure we dot these i's right and cross these t's. So, um, under exhibit G, right, terms and conditions of rec facilities use agreement, the city and tenant are entering into that certain rec facilities agreement dated on or about the date of this lease. The terms and conditions in the use agreement shall control as to such matters are set forth therein, as, uh, the same may be amended in writing. And then it says, as a general understanding, the parties agree that the use agreement shall expire in three years from their date of execution. And certain terms shall expire when the CO is issued for additional classroom facilities on the land. At such time, the tenant and the students will automatically quit and vacate the police substations. So I, th- does this say anywhere on this agreement, anything about the gym?
No, it doesn't spell it out. So I, I mean, listen, I don't, I don't have an objection to clarifying. I, I think the reason why it reads that way and it talks about, um, certain terms shall expire, not all the, you know, terms, is because this, this question of the gym. That is the one obligation that goes beyond. The use agreement contemplates that for the classrooms and for these other elements. So I, I don't have any objection on behalf of our client adding a sentence after that that stipulates that. You know, not, notwithstanding any, um, notwithstanding that the, the terms of that use agreement, it is understood by the parties that the use of the gymnasium on the premises, um, will continue to be governed by the city ordinance requiring use as set forth. I have no objection. I mean, to dot i's and cross t's.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a heavy lift. Okay, so, do you go with that?
I have no objection.
Okay. And then, and then just, just to kind of, um, and, and excuse my ignorance, Hugo, but can you just at a very high level, Cliff Notes, uh, walk me through the, the leasehold mortgage finance provision?
So, uh, uh, at a very high level, because I'm not a transactional attorney, but, um, basically, the, the school is going to, in all likelihood, from time to time undertake financing in order to construct. Lenders require, um, notice provisions and other elements, um, when there is a long-term lease. Think about it. If you, they require it even if you just get a mortgage and you own the property, but you could imagine that the, the, a lender that's going to lend the school millions of dollars to construct facilities and do whatever they're gonna do, needs to have some, certain assurances. And so it's typically pre-negotiated that, you know, basically the, um, flip to it. Um, the, any mortgage on the leasehold interest, meaning any mortgage on that portion that Kohia has, and I'm gonna make another point because I want to clarify. Um, we'll follow these provisions and that, you know, the, the, the tenant actually has to let the city know, hey, we took on a mortgage for the construction of one of our buildings or we did all of that. Because ultimately, a leasehold interest is not an ownership interest in the fee simple sense of the word. So it, it isn't as if the school owns this property free and clear, they are leasing it from the city. So as a result, you basically pre-agree for these series of notices that have to be given back and forth if the city takes on, um, any kind of, uh, if, if Kohia takes on any kind of financing. This is very standard in shopping centers. I mean, anywhere where someone is going to borrow money to improve a structure, build a building, do anything on property that they don't own, that they are leasing, they pre-set forth what are the notices that will go back and forth so that both the landlord, the city knows what's going on and that the, so the leasehold, the, the, the lender is aware of the lease. There's also an affirmative obligation. Obviously, if any change occurs to the lease, you have to let the, the, the lender know.
So, so, and, and, and so what happens, worst case scenario, Kohia defaults on a loan?
They have to notify the city and include the city in any kind of discussions or negotiations with respect to their ability to perfect that mortgage and, and, and come collect on that money. They don't get to just come and, and take over. There's an additional step. And that's why you, you put this in place. Cause unlike that property you own free and clear, where a foreclosure sale is a pretty standard thing, maybe we all understand a little bit more. Here, there would have to be, um, certain, uh, requisites. It would give an opportunity for Kohia to cure that problem. But ultimately, if Kohia is unable to pay a debt that they secured with a leasehold interest, Kohia could in, in theory, lose, lose their lease. No different than a person who owns a piece of property and takes out a mortgage on it. If they can't pay their mortgage, might lose their property.
But then are we stuck with the bill?
No, 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 because the city never, no, no, the city never took on that lending responsibility.
And just, and, and, and again, hold on, and I, I just, just to wrap my head around it, right? You, you go, I mean, you get where I'm getting at, right? So, 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 you know, the school takes out a loan to build, right? Makes sense. So what are they using as collateral though? What, what, so, right? Cause if you default, if I stop paying my house, the bank comes in and takes my house, right?
Oh, they're, they're using a couple of things because of the charter school financing mechanism, they're utilizing the, the, the pledge of having monies that come in to, you know, educate the children. The state has a, 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 uh, an FDE of full-time equivalent amount that gets paid to any charter school, certain number of thousands of dollars that every student receive. So they basically utilize the, the bucket of money that they receive. Hey, they're utilizing grants. We're well aware of a grant that in fact the city helped secure because the city owns the property and all of you were the board at the time that that grant process started. And so there's various mechanisms in place that would be there for, for that.
And, and then if I, have we confirmed that there's safeguards, for example, like I, you know, and I don't know the specifics here, right? But Kohia uses, uh, uh, you know, a loan to, to build the gym or whatever is that they're doing, right? The, the wing and all that. Um, but then, you know, ten years later, they want to pull another loan out to do something else. I, are there safeguards that say, hey, they have to come before the administration, right, that in order to get that approval?
Good question. The way that it's addressed in the, uh, lease mortgage provisions is they are allowed to get a leasehold mortgage. And I want to be clear, it's a leasehold mortgage. They're encumbering their lease. They're, they are not allowed to encumber the city property, the city fee. Only their lease, what would be foreclosed by a bank would be the lease, the ability to be there for that period of time under the lease, not anything more, not anything less. They are only allowed to have one lease, and I can show you the language, one leasehold mortgage at a time on this facility. They can't go and get, you know, leasehold mortgage, one, two, three, one, one at a time. And that was negotiated with them in there. And, um, what it basically does, uh, is, is, um, those, those things which are included, uh, are specific to this deal, but what it basically does is uh, if Kohia doesn't cure, it lets a bank come in and cure. A bank does, doesn't just get it scot-free. I mean, the bank has to come in and make up whatever the default is. And then, you know, it's, uh, they sort of assume. But, but they, they need to cure whatever the default is, rent or et cetera.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you. So I'm, I'm good. And then you're good with just adding that.
Yeah, to exhibit G, I don't, I mean, we can restate it. I, I went off the cuff, like stated, but you can include that in a motion. That'd be great.
Right, right. Yeah. We, we can include that. And, and the language I have is that notwithstanding anything else, uh, to the contrary in the use agreement, it is agreed by the parties and by Kohia that, uh, use will be governed by city ordinances and regulations or however.
Use of the gymnasium, right.
Uses of a gymnasium, right. Um, so that, that can be added as, um, and, uh, an addendum to, um, the use agreement. I don't, I don't think you require separate action on that unless you want to see it again, but if, that, that would be the wording. That would be, I think we, that would be added. Counselor?
If I may through the chair?
Yes, ma'am.
You know, you bring up a very good point that's actually terrifying because considering that the governor may put on the ballot that we're not gonna be, um, taxed or as an option to not have taxing, how does this put into play now charter schools? Are they still gonna get funding through the state? So this is, it's a very interesting topic for what's to come with schools in general, but with charter schools added to that pot. Um, so if, if, if a contractor isn't paid and they decide to lean that, the property, then they're leaning, they're putting a lien on the city property.
No, they're not.
If they're not being paid.
They're putting a lien on the improvement that's been.
And they're, they're required to have a payment and performance bond, which is when you're building on, on city property, as, as you all know, uh, if we enforce it, and I do believe we enforce that, the contractors required and we're required to review it and they're required to, uh, give it to us a payment and performance bond saying, I will pay my subs and I will perform the contract. And then if they don't, what, what you're supposed to do is make a claim on that bond. But, but.
So not on the property?
Not on the property because it's public property and the legislature has carved out that, um, exception.
Good. All right. So, um, and, and just to a point that you said, it kind of struck a little, a little nerve. You said that the property is underutilized. Again, I went by the property last week. All three fields are rented out the entire week. It's not underutilized. I don't know who's telling you that. You know, unfortunately, they're using you to say that, but we live here, you don't live here. You know, and I drive by the property and I got down and I spoke to the park manager and I even asked him, hey, by any chance, he didn't know who I was, how are these fields? Oh, they're rented out every single day, the whole week. So it's not an underutilized park. And I stand by what I believe in and you guys all know where I stand on this. And I stand by what I believe in and you guys all know where I stand on this.
Fair enough.
Through the chair. Um, as I, I've, as I've said often, um, you know, I'm up here representing the residents. So I, I really want to make the best choice by our residents. I also know that many of our residents are Cohia students, Cohia families, right? Uh, the school's an amazing school, amazing programming, and, and I want to see programs like that flourish in our city, right? Um, but I obviously want to address concerns, right? Um. And city attorney, I really want us to kind of all be on the same page here, right? So in this agreement. Can we make it clear that our residents of all ages, students or elderly? Because we have an elderly population at Slade Park right now, right? That there is going to be no interruption to them, um, during the construction of Cohia. Um, after everything is done with Cohia. Um, you know, will there be any interruption at the indoor facility where we currently have our elderly having, you know, the lunches? Um, the basketball courts, the outdoor gym, um, the, the, the baseball fields that are there now. Is there, is there anything in, in this agreement? That prohibits from them visiting these parks and, and using what they use today? And city attorney or I don't know, Ismael, if you want to address that, um, not sure who's been. Who from the administration's been working on the, on the lease agreement, but if we can just confirm that, please.
What, what lease? As in exhibit C tenants work, construction. Uh, for phases five and six and for phase four shown on the site plan in exhibit A. Uh, landlord and tenant shall coordinate parking for tenant staff and construction personnel and staging a construction we performed. In a manner to minimize to the extent commercially possible, any adverse impacts on the operations, use and enjoyment of the park. Provided however, that it is understood that there will be impacts, including construction personnel, parking, noise, fencing and intermittent traffic. Providing that, uh, tenant and its contractors will use reasonable efforts to keep such efforts to a minimum impact. Uh, because of these concerns that was included in tenants work, which is one of the exhibits of the lease. I just, uh, read it out here. I'll, I'll show it.
So that kind of just says, right, that the tenant, um, which would be Cohia and the city would kind of come to an agreement, right?
Yes, to, to try to minimize disruptions to, to, you know. Uh, I mean, construction is, is construction, but to try, minimize, minimize. To the extent commercially possible, any adverse impacts on the operations, use and enjoyment of the park.
Which councilwoman is no different than if the city undertakes tomorrow a desire to build out a facility at any of your parks? And people got to come and be able to park and you're going to have equipment for a period of time, you would do the same thing, right? If you were just building something, you would do the same thing. I mean, I, I, again, in an effort to not be unfuzzy, I mean, sure, construction always is going to involve, you know, people having to come and work. And it's going to involve equipment and it's going to involve, you know, deliveries. And, and that's why tenant work exhibits exist to provide for a, a vehicle by which, you know, you minimize that impact. Um, you know, Slade Park is considerably larger than where we're constructing. I remind you again, we're constructing along, south along existing parking and then a little, you know, to, to the, to the east there. So it's not like this construction is going to be undertaken in the vast majority of Slade Park. It's going to be constructed in the western edge, um, of, of the park. So, I mean, that's, that's what anyone can do is just work with the city, um, and say. No different than if you were had approved a residential project or a shopping center project. Hey, as you do your construction, as you do your delivery, as delivery trucks show up, you've got to clean the streets. All of that is standard fare for construction.
Yeah, I just, you know, I just want to make sure that, um, you know, the interruption is minimal if, if there is. I mean, um. I visited the park, uh, not too long ago. I wanted to speak to the residents there, the residents around there. Um, and so I'm just trying to make the best decision for, for everybody, right? Uh, again, I, I'm a fan of the school and so I want to see programming like this flourish. But how do we come into an agreement, right? Is there a covenant for this? Do we have like?
Well, you have a, a lease.
Yeah, but the lease, you know, like for example, the agreement, right? Like saying the city and, and the, the city and the tenant will come to an agreement. Well, at that time, it depends who's here in administration, right? Is who's going to decide? And so it's, it's hard. It's hard to make decisions like this, but yeah, Ismael, if you can. And, and again, so just want to say, right? Previous, when we, when we went over this and the plans, we were involved. We were hands-on. We were asked what it was that this council wanted. On this agreement, none of us, at least I have not been involved and so therefore I have to ask these questions.
Sure, understood. So typically before any construction takes place, there's a pre-construction meeting. And in that meeting, we will have our director of construction, our folks from parks, we'll have all the folks at the table. And we will discuss what would be the best way to set up, um, you know, stage for construction. In order not to impact or to impact the least possible, the activities of the park. And I'm assuming the school would have an interest in that as well. So this, um, and, and the rest of the buildings will be built in like in phases, right? It's not going to be all the construction happening at once. So that's also important to know.
The other, um, so I just, I, I just want to, is the, is the indoor facility where the seniors eat, is that going to be impacted? Will that be shut down?
No.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that we're on the record.
No.
Okay. And then the other question is, um, which I know we're.
That's a non-negotiable. We understand.
Okay. Um. The other thing I, so I know a councilman tuned the door asked for that to be right, the amended, right about the, about the gym.
It was read out and, um, Hugo Arza agreed to it on behalf of the.
Perfect.
And the gym, I, I should hasten that. I'm sure the council realizes at, at the end of the agreement, the gym, like all other improvements will be city property.
Okay. And that's, that's important, right?
That's, so that's the law. We're, we're the owner. So, you know, they, they can't take the gym with them when they, you know, that's, you know. That's, that's just, that's just Florida law.
So I just want to ask a simple question, right? And council president, if it's okay with you, my question is where, Mr. Ozzy? Is it that it states that we are not going to have that gym after 2028? I, that, that's the concern. Did we not see that?
Yeah, it's very clear. The lease agreement expires in 2028. Between 2028 and 2079, for the next 46 years, we have no legal right to the gym. Unless it is very clear in the ordinance, we're going to be able to use the gym for the duration of the ordinance. But it was conveniently left out of the ordinance.
Okay. So, Mr.
If, if, if I could, let me correct Mr. Ozzy, although it seems silly that I have to do so. It's not the lease, it's not the use agreement. I'm sorry, it's not the lease that expires in three years. It's the use agreement approved at the last board meeting that was for a shorter duration. We have now, in addition to having previously included compliance with all city ordinances, which contains the language of the use of the gymnasium. To Mr., to Councilman Tundidor's, uh, request, have now felt and suspended that point. And made it even more clear by adding that language to exhibit G.
And, and I'll repeat the language that, uh, is substantially going to be the effect of, notwithstanding anything else in the terms of the use agreement. It is agreed as to the use of the gymnasium by the parties, that the use will be governed by, by city ordinances and regulations. Is there something else that you?
Will there be, uh, an actual year date on that?
I, I have no objection to including the ordinance date, whatever the 2025, uh, whatever, I, I don't. Or as may, as may be amended. I mean, just, you know, like, I don't know. I mean, to your point of what a future council may want to do, it works both ways. If a council could come and say, we don't want you at all, we want something different, let's negotiate. I understand your concern, but it's the, the nature of that. So, um, I, I don't have any objection to specifying what ordinance specifically stated that, the use of those. Um, and I would just say as amended, because as, none of us can predict what might happen when you and I are both not in these positions 20, 30, 50 years from now.
I think, um, as long as that's amended and that's put in there, I think that protects, right? Our residents that they will have the, the facilities that were promised to them that we've talked about. But it also, um, you know, gives the school the ability to, to move forward.
Yeah, indeed. Uh, council member, the Cohia representative has agreed to that language. It was just read out.
We do.
Ozzy, does that make you feel better?
Yeah, I just hope they make it very clear.
It's going to be clear. It's going to be amended.
To be added to the ordinance, the city could use the gymnasium all the way until the end of the agreement, which is 2079. Very clear because he's still being a little fuzzy here and, and Mr. Frye, I hope you help us here. Come on.
Uh, I mean, I can't communicate with my 13, 15 and 18-year-old daughters. And I figured that that was just an age issue and the fact that they're teenagers. I can't communicate with Mr. Ozzy. No, Mr. Ozzy, we're done. We're done.
Ozzy, Ozzy, Ozzy.
That was an insult. That was an insult. I asked for the apology. Okay, just make it in writing, make it legal. Yeah, just make it legal, put it in writing. And I don't need these insults from this guy. Okay, I don't need an insult from this guy. He insulted me. I want an apology.
Ozzy, he's not going to give you an apology.
Well, he just called me. I need an apology. Okay, don't believe in the attorney and the used car salesman. Please put it in writing because he's still being fuzzy. And Mr. City Attorney, I hope you help.
Ozzy, clear. Ozzy.
Clear, he, he.
Ozzy, Ozzy, we're done.
He needs to respect other people too, right?
Ozzy, come on, you haven't insulted everybody else. Come on, give him a chance. Get, no, Ozzy, no. Um, Melinda, you, you don't ask him a question already, Ozzy?
With Ozzy.
Mr. Arza, uh, as to this point, I know, not to put too fine of a. Yes, you did, Ozzy. I may, not to put too fine of a point on him, but, um, adding to the language that we read, uh, read out, just simply another sentence. The gymnasium will be freely available to the city after the expiration of the use agreement. Is that acceptable?
In a, yeah, in accordance with the ordinance.
Uh, in, in a, in, in accordance.
Right.
With. Um, we'll just repeat the language, um.
Yeah.
City ordinances and regulations. I think that, that further clar, okay?
I mean, I don't. Or I specified in ordinance 2025 dash whatever, which has the Monday, you know, has the Wednesday and Friday and all that.
Right. If you want us, we can, we can certainly refer to the ordinance number. Once we have it, we haven't passed the ordinance yet. So, you know, as specified.
No, 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 no. I'm sorry. My, my reference, my reference is that we reference the ordinance, the zoning ordinance that, that.
All right. Oh, I.
That memorialized that. So this, this council and, and Councilman De La Vega, you were instrumental in securing additional. So that January ordinance, we can.
No, thanks, thanks for the clarification. Right.
That's, I'm sorry. I didn't mean this, that, that would be circular.
I, I understand. Right.
Uh, no, I'm saying the commitment we made previously in January, we will continue to carry forth with the express language that Councilman Tundior.
Right. The zoning ordinance, we have that and that's available. Thanks for that point of clarification. We can reference that number. As set forth in city, uh, you know, city ordinance, you know.
Councilwoman, you good?
Good.
Okay. Any other comments? Can we have a motion?
Motion.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Take role, please.
Sir, your motion is as amended?
Yes, yes, yes. Thank you.
Ms. De La Vega?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
No.
Mr. Rodriguez? Mr. Tundidor?
Yes.
Mr. Zogby?
Yes.
Mr. Jumbo?
Yes.
Motion carries. The item is approved.
Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Thank you. We'll have this. I promise you.
Goodbye, Fuzzy.
Item 11B, first reading of proposed ordinance. Providing a rebate of $200 as is set forth in the annual budget to the city of Hialeah property owners. Within the city who have a current homestead exemption under section 196.031 Florida statutes. Payment to be made by the city between November 1st, 2025 and December 31st, 2025. Repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for penalties for violation hereof. Providing for servability clause, providing for an effective date and a sunset clause.
Okay, do we have any presentation on this again?
Presentation.
Move forward.
Uh, got it. Yeah. Okay, perfect. Yeah, thank you. See, you have a printed copy and you should also see it on your screen.
I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am. Good to go.
Good to go?
Yeah.
Okay. So, um, so we're here to, um, discuss the mayor's proposal. For the one-time rebate, um, for homestead, uh, residential properties. So as you know, the rebate amount is $300 per homesteaded property owner. Number of eligible homes that we have in the city, about 32,100. And the total estimated.
200 or 300, I'm sorry.
32,100.
300 dollars.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
The number of eligible homesteaded.
Sorry.
Homes, properties are 32,100 in the city. And the total estimated cost of this $200 rebate per homeowner is about 6.4 million dollars. As we discussed during the, uh, last budget meeting. Here's how we're going to, um, get to this 6.4 million dollars. Um, we have agreed to, um, defer some of the projects that we have, uh, throughout the city, capital projects. We have like, for example, Slate Park and Sparks Park was, um, was supposed to get brand new roofs. We're looking at repairing the roofs and sort of, you know, kicking the can down the road for now. Um, the, the CCTV cameras in parks, we had allocated $500,000 to enhance the, uh, park camera program. And we've reduced that to $250,000. So all in all, we will be reducing 4.6 million dollars from the general fund. Um, by way of projects as well as the contingency fund that we typically have handy. We went from $1 million to $500,000 and we have about 330 and $28,000 in eliminated positions or deferred positions. And with that, we're also pulling 1.8 million dollars from our, um, general fund reserves. Okay. So what you see on your screen right now is again, the, uh, the summary of where our general fund reserves is positioned. Um, the general fund balance currently has 62.1 million dollars. We have, um, already offered to subsidize the increase from Miami-Dade County, uh, water. Um, pro, uh, uh, upcharge of 13 million dollars. And, um, we have, um, we, in order for us to make, uh, this budget balance. We have pulled $3 million from our fund reserve. So that leaves us with $46 million in the reserve fund. As you heard from Ruth earlier, the, um, GFOA recommends that we have a minimum of two months of operations. Um, at minimum in our general fund reserves. Our city ordinance says that we must keep a minimum of 25 million dollars. So, uh, uh, a, a point that I want to make sure you understand. That our city requires us to keep, keep a minimum of 25 million dollars. Which means that at no time should our fund reserve be less than 25 million dollars. Okay? So in order for us to again, get to that $200 rebate per homeowner. We are pulling, as you see, 4.6 million dollars from the general, uh, budget. And the 1.8 from the fund reserves, that leaves us 44.2 million dollars in our reserve fund. Excuse me while I play around with all these clickers in the computer. Before, um. Yeah, I'm good. Thank you. So as, as we, um, I know that some conversation was. Excuse me while I play around with all these clickers in the computer. Before, um. Yeah, I'm good. Thank you. So as, as we um, I know that some conversation was had here uh, related to, well, two hundred dollars may not be enough. We want to go above um, the two hundred dollar rebate. I want you all to um, consider or, or analyze some considerations before trimming our general fund or general fund reserves. We have liabilities that we have no backup for. That includes the pending litigations, which total up to seventy million dollars. And that does not include attorney's fees and litigation costs. We have the city's insurance burden, so we are, uh, our city is self-insured for not just health benefits, but property insurance liability and windstorm. So if there were, if there was a catastrophe uh, here in the city, it could certainly wipe out our reserves and even more. Uh, the, the real estate market is very volatile and I don't know if, if you see the same thing I see around the city of Hialeah. But something that I see driving around that I haven't seen in years is a lot of for rent signs. So it doesn't look like properties are renting as quickly as they were in the past. And we're beginning to see a downtrend in the market, in areas uh, around the state. And it, it's sure to hit South Florida pretty soon as well. Pension contributions, our pension contribution, our annual um, cost is very dependent on market performance. If the market performs well, we get to pay less. If the farm market doesn't perform as well, we get to pay a little more. And certainly the rising cost of inflation is definitely outpacing our revenue. So uh, the same thing you see in your homes with, you know, the, the person that comes clean your pool or, or, or cut your lawn or basically the, you know, the groceries, um, every service and every good is, is certainly going up. We are feeling the same thing here, here in the city. We are not increasing our fees or our costs. And we're definitely feeling that um, the, the, the cost of operation is definitely outpacing our revenues already. The growth of social infrastructure, so I know many of you are super supportive of the vertical construction that's happening in the city. And um, and, and it definitely, we need a lot of affordable housing, a lot more inventory in affordable housing, a lot more living spaces, but with those living spaces come people. So what happens when families move into the city? More cars mean more road improvements, more kids, more parks programs, more residents, more first responders and other services. So we need to keep that in mind. And then certainly essential support services. But we have the collective bargaining units, all three of them, ASME, police and fire are up for renegotiations in twenty twenty-six. And it's well documented, we have tons of analysis that, you know, the city of Hialeah employees, police, fire, ASME, everyone, with the exception of very, very few people, are much more underpaid than those municipal employees in our surrounding cities. It's very well documented. In addition to that, we have made a commitment to our police and fire for those officers that started working in the city after twenty thirteen to improve their pension benefits. And um, and, and so I want to put something in perspective for you. We do a projection of what our COLA and our salaries might look like for the following year. Being extremely conservative, and by extremely conservative, I mean, we are looking at maybe a three percent COLA on an average, which means that not everybody's gonna get a three percent. But just looking at a three percent COLA average, our negotiations of the three units, just on COLA alone, we need to look at allocating ten million dollars for that. And that would, because that impacts also the pension and the benefits. In addition to that, the pension contributions for police and fire, as you heard before, is a, that comes at a cost of about one point four million dollars. So just between those two items, we need to make sure that we have eleven point four million dollars in our coffers for next year. And um, and that doesn't include every other liability that we have on the books that we have no plan for. Let's itself, some of you did ask, what does it look like? What if we were to offer two hundred and twenty dollars in rebate? What if we offered three hundred dollars in rebate? Well, there you see it. Two hundred and twenty dollars means that we would have to um, find seven million dollars to be able to allocate um, a rebate of two hundred and twenty dollars to thirty-one thousand plus homeowners. Three hundred dollars comes at a cost of nine point six million dollars. So at this point, I guess my question is to you, we, we provide you with information and we take direction from you as to what you want to see here in the city. But it comes at a very high cost, this, this rebate. And it will be your, your call. You need to give us direction as to what you would like to offer and where you want to see the cuts.
Okay. Yeah, through the chair? Yeah. Okay. Um, great, yeah, it was great, great presentation. Thank you, Imadi. And so I, I don't know if we got this yet. We had asked for, for total number of, of vacant positions.
Sure.
Can you walk me through that again, please? Maybe I mostly missed that.
I have an updated um, vacancy report for all of you. Let me. So from the last time you received this vacancy report, um, some of the positions that were in the hiring process have been filled. So some offers had been already offered. Um, there are some that are um, that were way in the hiring process. And as early as today, we got an update from um, the uh, major in uh, nine-one-one operations that of the nine positions, the nine vacancies that he has, uh, about six of them will be filled uh, in about a week. So a lot of offers have been in the table and uh, on the table, and there've been some positions that were in training as well.
And, and so um, I, I'd like to have um, I'd like to have uh, some documentation on, on when those positions were filled or when those offers were made. Um, I'd like to see that, yeah, as soon as possible. And then um, so, so, so just, just to be clear then, because I'm looking at this thing and I know that the last time we talked about it, we had said, let me make note of that. When do you think we can get that, Imadi?
Um. Elsa, can we get that by tomorrow, latest Thursday? All the. Okay. Yeah, so we have, we had about four or five employees start today. We'll, we'll get you that within a day or two. Is that okay?
Yeah, perfect. Yeah, o- offers made within the last two months.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, and then, and then so, so I'm looking at, at this vacancy report and then just help me understand this, um, when I go to the final page, it says grand total vacant full-time position one oh, one oh four.
Correct.
And then um, and then that equals to six point two million dollars.
Correct. And then you see the um, deducting the file, the, the filled or in hiring positions.
Yeah.
Those were a total of thirteen positions.
Okay.
Um, and so, so we have thirteen ninety eighty-nine positions left, ninety-one positions left.
Okay.
To be filled.
If I can, quick, I just want to know what the number is, that point seventy-five, point five.
The, the uh, the part-time positions?
Yeah, they're saying that, I guess they're missing half of an employee or?
Yeah, no, it's.
Quarter.
Yeah, some of them are one and a half position.
What, seventy-five?
So it's, it's one. Where do you see the point seventy-five? We have um.
Enterprise.
Those are split.
And we have.
Those are split.
Streets, half.
They're, they're uh, split between several funds, not just one.
Number of vacancies, that's what it's saying.
Yeah. So, so you're looking at information technology?
Right, that's one of them, or like streets, half.
Well, so.
Vacancy.
Say that again?
It's half of a vacancy and I.
Yeah, so it's a part-time position. So when you see point five, it's typically a, a part-time position, half a time.
Okay.
Okay, and then um, in information technology, you see one point two five because it's support. So there's, there's actually two positions that support police, the North Compound, Streets, Parks, ECS and Construction.
And point seventy-five, then it's three different departments?
So.
How does that work?
Right here. No, these, this is different ones.
Different ones. These are all full times.
So they're just sharing funds? So I apologize, I stay corrected. They, they share funds. So meaning that half of a position is, is, is um, charged to this fund and then half of that position is charged to another, another department.
Okay. All right, thank you.
That's right, we're just discussing full-time.
Yeah.
Right. So um, so then, after the thirteen positions that, that you'll send me, the offers made, um, we have ninety-one left, which equal to five point two million dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then um,
And.
You mentioned somewhere here, um, this, this through presentation, A, I think it might have been the uh, I guess like the second slide about the capital improvements, you say here on one of your points, um, three hundred and twenty-eight thousand eliminated positions and delayed hiring. Which, which one of those are, are on this sheet?
The, the only one that is here is the retirement position. It's delayed by six months. The other two eliminated positions are not on this report.
All right, so, so there's five point two million dollars, ninety-one uh, vacancies. I see here that there's been some vacancies since, since twenty twenty.
Yeah.
Okay.
Councilman Tunidor, are you done?
No.
Okay, through the chair?
Yes.
Chair?
It's funny, I, I just want to understand something. So the two hundred dollar rebate, right, the total estimated cost is six point four million, correct?
Correct.
And if we wanted to get to an, a, a higher number, right, let's just use two fifty as an example, it would be a cost of eight point two five.
Yep.
Approximately about eight million, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
These vacant positions, which Councilman Tunidor, there's some that are from two thousand. So there's some vacancies here that are twenty-five years old.
Sure.
Are all these positions budgeted in, in, in the budget?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So if I wanted to, and, and I think I've been very vocal since we started speaking about this rebate, right, about the two fifty number, we would have to find an additional one point six million to get to the two fifty, correct?
Correct.
And so any reason why we have some positions that are twenty-five years old and we don't have them vacant, yet they're still in the budget?
Sure, so you're specifically referring to the water and sewer fund positions?
Well, not, well, there's just, there's several because there's, there's one of, there's solid waste, there's, there, there's just, they're kind of like scattered everywhere and I, I'm just curious if, if a position hasn't been filled in, I don't know. I'm just saying the ones that are very excessive. What, is there a reason we continue to have them? Just, just so I'm aware.
Sure, so um, i- in conversations with um, with the department, has there some uh, some positions that may have been a job description that was shared by two different individuals? And so the, both vacancies were open at one point and then that open vacancy, they filled one position and not the other. So that vacancy sort of stayed in the books. Um, as it relates to um, the water and sewer fund in particular, for example, um, they would love to hire all those positions, but they cannot afford to. So every year for the past three years, um, they, every time that they have the true-up from the county at the end of the year, we have to pay more in water. So as much as I would want to fill those positions, they can't afford to because that money goes to um, to pay for, for the monies. And I, and I made um, additional copies for you to share that um, the last audit report basically shows that the water department in particular is um, seven million dollars in a negative.
So how much, how much of this money through the chair, how much of this money of, of water and sewer positions did we use uh, to pay for the increase of Miami-Dade County this year?
Uh, all of it.
All of it?
All of it, so all of it and then some. So there's about um, there's about one point two million here, including stormwater. And if I'm not mistaken, um, we returned, what was it, like one point four million dollars for the true-up? Kevin, do you have that copy?
I had it quickly.
Oh, I have it, I have it, nevermind. I have it, yeah. Okay, so in um, in twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, the true-up was um, a little bit over five million dollars. In um, in twenty-three, twenty-four, we had, the true-up was two point three million dollars. And last year was a little less, was a little less than a million.
So just, just to understand, this, when these vacancies are not filled and we have that extra money budgeted, we use that money to pay?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
What else, what else, what else do we use that money for in the past? And now, I'm not just talking about just Kevin, I mean, in, in general, what has been the practice?
So when the, when the money is not used for that, it just, it, it remains in the department, it comes back to the department.
But is it used in other ways within the department?
No.
Never?
Hmm, to be, to be able to use employment dollars for operations needs special permission. That's not dollars that you mingle.
So, so raises?
Well, you could use it for raises, yes.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
A little different.
But all, but salaries.
Got it, so.
Salaries.
So then, so then, and then help me, help me understand this. I noticed here, Imadi, on the, on the enterprise fund for water and sewer, I, I see here that the total, total cost is one point two million a, of, of positions vacant. Is that, is that a fair?
Well, so there are um, there's a little less than that. There's one, two, three, four, five, there are six positions in hiring right now.
Right now?
Yeah.
It's interesting, yeah.
So is maybe hmm, eight. Do you know exactly how much without those six positions we have in vacant, in vacancies, Kevin? Nine hundred and fourteen thousand dollars.
Are you done?
Uh, for now, yeah.
If I may through the chair?
Sure.
So one of those that like, I'm looking at is a building inspector. We have those three positions since twenty twelve.
Mm-hmm.
It, what's, what's the, what has been the difficulty in finding someone to fill that position in three years? And, no, I'm sorry, in thirteen years?
So the building, the building fund is not one that we typically take a very close look at because it's extremely restricted. The building fund can only be used for building operations. We can't, we can't use that money for anything else. So the building fund is strictly for building operations, not one that we typically keep a close eye on.
But, but why haven't we been able to hire an inspector? For, for that many years, we haven't had interest, people haven't applied for it. Is that application constantly open through, you know, the hialeah.gov application? Are we not posting it? What, I just?
So that might be a.
So that might be a better question for the building official. Look at these here, Alexis. We can. We can get that information for you.
Okay, is Elsa, is this something that's posted since twenty-twelve? No? So I just want to see how these positions were clicked, so if we have. That many positions open, three positions since twenty-twelve, how do people apply for it? How do we know that it's vacant if it's not being posted anywhere for someone to apply for it?
Good evening, Elsa de Meo, uh, Bellis, HR Director. We only post when the department proceeds and says, hey, I want to post this position. We obtain the approval from budget, from the mayor, from everybody, and that's when we post. So the departments tell us, I want to post it at this time.
Alexis is in the back. So if um, so if we approve the, the budget with vacancies, it's allocated funds. No, but that's, it's not just for building, let's say, I'm, first I want to walk through this process with you, if you don't mind. Um, if we pass the budget and we know that there's, we budgeted for these vacancies for every department. Why don't we? Have those conversations with those directors and say, okay, this is available, you're, you're, you have the budget allocated for this, why don't we post? Those positions immediately, why are we?
We have to get a requisition form, in other words, there's a process where the department director requests it, it goes through the budget process. Right, to make sure, hey, I have this many positions, this is how much we've allocated, it can, it goes to. Um, HR to make sure we have a job description and the like. And then it goes to the mayor's office, but it all starts with each department. Each department has to, it's not automatically, we don't just automatically post. It has to be the department who makes that initiation, I'm ready to hire it at this time.
So the administration doesn't push that forward, the mayor at the time. Doesn't say, hey, to the department head, we're having a crisis in this department, I need you to post this. The mayor can't be the one that initiates that?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, haven't we? Okay, so if I may, Mr. Riveron, just thank you Elsa, thank you Imadi.
Here's, here's your vacancies.
So I just, how are you, good evening? I just wanted to see what was the vacancies that we have, the three positions that are available right now. Since twenty-twelve for building inspector. Walk me through what it, the need or not the need for the department hiring those positions that have been budgeted for the last thirteen years.
Uh, we need inspectors. Um, it's hard finding them, but why it's been this, two thousand, tw- twenty-twelve and the vacancy, I, I. I don't know what to tell you.
So, have you requested to have, to like, put out through HR to hire? We've advertised, and how has that feedback been with the application process?
The, it's hard to find inspectors. For building department, yeah.
For the building department, the qualifications are?
Architect, engineer, contractor. Um, professionals.
Right, so then, are, did you know that you had those, those three positions available?
Um, might have.
Yeah, do you think there's a need for us to hire?
Right now, I don't, unless it's qualified, no, not at this moment.
Not what?
Not at this moment.
Not, you don't need at this moment, right now, how many building inspectors do we have in, in the department?
Total, uh, I have seven employees in the building department.
No inspectors, building inspectors that are qualified with the engineering and the architect.
I'm forty.
Okay, so it's not, not that, that hard, you have forty of them, okay, so that's good. Alright, so forty are constantly active right now in, in, in the building department. Okay, alright.
May I ask, what is this concerning?
It's vacancies all through every department, we're trying to allocate funds to see what's been frozen. In every department, we went through public works when we stepped outside, and now we went to the building department. So we're just analyzing the funds and understanding why HR. And what's the understanding of holding positions for all these years? Yeah, thank you, sir, I appreciate it.
Mi- Mr. Building Official, just, just state your name and title for the record.
Alexis Riveron, five oh one Palm Avenue, second floor.
Thank you.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Riveron, please don't leave a second. Um, are some of these? The fifteen vacancies you have there.
Fifteen?
Uh, uh, well, according to the list we were given. Alright, so are some of these duties being? Cause that may explain it maybe, are some of these being contracted out, like plans, processors and whatnot? We, we, do we have that?
No, we're all employees.
So we don't have any contracted, any outside? People that are doing these duties right now?
I have a contract with a private provider, but only in case of an emergency. Something happens, that's about it, but not that we're.
So our plans, inspectors and processes are all current employees?
In-house, yes.
We don't, okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, so just um. So, so the two hundred dollar rebate is uh, six point four million? Hey, right, it's, it's, okay. A. Either the mayor or, or, or Imadi, if, if we wanted to get to. Let's say somewhere in the middle, two fifty, that comes out to eight million, is that right? Am I reading that correctly?
For two hundred and fifty, yes, it's eight million dollars.
Okay, so we're looking at a difference of one point six million. When you do the, do the math, right? Six point four. So is, is, is one point six something difficult for you to find? Within the five point two million dollar vacancies?
You want my honesty? Six point four is hard for us to find.
Yeah.
Considering everything that we have in the horizon.
Yeah.
It, it.
Take it into consideration, this is a one-time fee. Right, a one-time, a one-time uh, uh, program, a, is that? Can you find that, is what I'm asking, I guess?
Well, we could, we could definitely, we could definitely look at, um, you know, ways to find it, I guess. You know, what would be, what areas would you like us to look at?
Yeah. Yeah.
Right, because I need to understand uh. Wh- what areas? Would be um, you folks would be more amenable.
Yeah.
To looking into and reducing.
And then, at city attorney, is this, does this require two readings?
Well, it's an ordinance, yes, it requires two readings, and by the charter, anytime you're um. Um, granting revenues or making a, a public expenditure that requires an ordinance, so it has to be by ordinance, not by resolution. And just uh, uh, one thing that alluded to the restriction on uh. On building fees, uh, state law provides that um, in a statute that. Uh, such fees, referring to building fee, shall be used solely for carrying out the local government's responsibilities and enforcing the Florida Building Code.
Thank you. Yeah, so I, you know, and, and something that you might want to look at, right, um. When you look at the five, so after these positions that have been offered or, you know, hired. You have five point two million dollars left. When you take out building, which is a fund that no one can touch. Um, you take out police, nine-one-one and fire, because I am assuming. That those, those are like the sacred cow, right, we don't, we don't want to touch um, first responders. And, and then I would venture to say that IT. Is probably um, one of those departments that needs. Uh, the additional staffing. Uh, because you might not be aware, but we went live with the, with ERP, uh, October first. And so we are in the process of implementation. And when we met and we discussed the implementation of the ERP. One of the questions that most of you asked was, well, are we going to need more staff? For, you know, for, for the ERP. And our answer to you was, well, possibly in, in IT, however. In most of the other departments, what we decided to do was hold on the vacancies. To reassess the work. That now is done at each of the departments based on our new procedures, right? The, the, the new way that, that we're operating. We would assess the need and then look at possibly. Retailering those positions to make sure that they fit the new. You know, tha- that, that new need that we have in each of our departments as it relates to uh, the ERP. And so, if you remember, in IT, we have some positions that will be supporting. Uh, the ERP, some of the other positions as um. As the security administrator and the applications manager. Were suggestion of the auditor.
Imadi, and so.
So when, so I'm sorry, so when you eliminate those areas. You have about one point one million dollars.
Yeah.
To play with.
So I think, I think, I think Kevin had mentioned now, after. You know, Houdin, all the, the uh, the, the, the positions that somehow. Are being hired now or were offered. I think he says it's about a million dollars left over, right? Um, so, um, as I'm just spitballing here with you, right, maybe, maybe I don't know much about this, but. But would it be possible then, right, to, to use? That million dollars, right, that we, that we've allocated to, to water and sewer, or, you know, for these positions. To free up a million dollars from the thirteen million that we transferred over from general, right? And then use that one million dollars um. To, to be able to fund this.
So I, I like Kevin to come up and, and talk about, I think, I think he's seen this happen in, in. In some other municipalities in the past.
Yeah.
And I think it might be good for him to come up and, and, and share with you, not just was he, what he's experiencing in his department, but. What he's seen in other places. So Kevin?
Yeah, but, 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 but Kevin, I just, I, I don't want to waste too much time on this, right, so I just, it, it's, it's. Like respond to my, to, to what I'm, to what I'm asking, right? So, if you have a million dollars in vacancies that you probably won't fund to this year, right, or whatever the case is, the next six months, right? What I'm asking is, can we use those one million dollars in these vacancies? To at least free up a million dollars from the thirteen million that we transferred over, right, from general? To your, to your, to your department to pay the increase in water and sewer. And then use that one million, right, from the general, to be able to participate in this, in this rebate program, can we make those chain of events happen?
I think uh, mathematically, it's true, uh, I will say that this is the worst budget I've ever put together. And brought before a commission uh, ever. It's completely unbalanced. And every additional dollar we take from it is just one more uh. Terrible thing that the council will face next. Uh, budget cycle, this, we've, we've dug a massive hole in this department. And it's, at this point, it's kind of just a problem, that's my thought on it. It can be done, but I, I, I would not advise it.
Through the chair?
Yes, sir.
Are, are you done?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
I just don't understand, and I commend those, I'm not talking specifically. About you, Kevin, it's okay, you don't have. I commend those directors who are saying that they can make it work without filling these budgeted positions, they are employees. They want to go along to get along, but I don't see how water and sewer, twenty years ago. We have two-thirds of the population we have now, two-thirds of the accounts, I'm probably exaggerating, it's probably less than that. And we had a department that was two and a half times bigger. Than what you have now. We had crews that would come out within minutes. When there were problems, seven days a week, we don't have that anymore. I don't think we could squeeze these departments anymore, and again, I commend, like the building department said, well, we can make it work for now, but I think things will work smoother. If these positions were filled, that might be on us as a city, we haven't been able to pay. Uh, uh, enough competitive salaries to attract these employees to fill these positions. But I just don't understand how these departments are making it work. With all these vacancies and all these empty positions with a lot less employees, when we have a lot bigger city. Every year, and that's why things are moving slowly, that's why I think people complain to us about. You know, when they're trying to do anything with the city, it takes forever, and it's not the director's fault, it's not, you go to war with the army you have. And what we're trying to do now is reduce that army. We cannot service this city with a reduction in employees, I wish there was some way to do it, but we can't do it. And, and I don't know how we've been doing it, that we've been growing so much, that's why things are getting so sluggish. To do anything in the city, and again, I'm not blaming anybody, it's what we have to work with. It's the amount of personnel we have to work with, I don't think we've got excess personnel. I wish we could fill these uh, budgeted positions, obviously they're budgeted. And to say now that we can just take them away because they haven't been filled, well, that's on us. To take them away, once you give them away, they're gone forever. And I don't know what we're gonna do, cause uh, less people means. Uh, things get done, uh, it take a lot longer to get done, I go to Publix. I go to Home Depot, if there's only one cashier, it takes me an hour to get a box of screws. It takes you a, an, an hour in Publix to buy anything, even if you've got just, you know. A few groceries, if there's only one cashier, two cashiers, everything slows down. We've promised the people in this city a certain quality of service, and what we're arguing now is how we're gonna cut that service. How we're gonna have less employees, and less employees means less service. And I don't think that's the solution, again, I commend the directors, they want to be team players. They're not trying to swim against the current and say, no, I definitely need that, and I'm not gonna budge. And I don't care what anybody up here says, I commend that. But that isn't the reality, I'm sorry, that's not the reality, it is taking a lot longer to do many of the services the city has. Was doing a lot faster years ago, and if we cut these budgeted positions, we're never gonna. Uh, budget them back, and as the city continues to grow. It's just gonna be a, a growing, more and more growing pains. And, and thank you, Kevin, for being so honest, I mean, you know, this, this is a tough budget. This is a tough budget, we're, we're, we're down to the wire here. And I, I don't think we should play games with these, but, you know, with these vacant positions, again. Maybe a better effort should be made to recruit. Maybe, you know, I don't know, are these positions constantly posted? On our job opportunities, on our city's website, I don't know, I've never seen ninety-three positions posted.
Right.
Or whatever, this is a hundred and two positions, I don't think that's being done effectively. But I don't think this is the solution. We're getting busier and busier, we have more customers, just like any store. And we're gonna have less employees, less people stocking, less people, it was less cashiers, I'm just using an analogy. But that's what's going on. And, 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 and we're overburdening the employees we already have. And the directors are trying to make the best of what they have, and that is not the solution. Maybe we should start, stop giving our money away, and I just want to make something very clear. And this, this subsidizing we've done with the water. We haven't made the, the increase disappear, we've taken taxpayer dollars and we've just moved it. We're, we're, we're digging one hole so we can cover another hole, so let's not fool anybody. It's not that we've found solutions, oh, we're gonna, we're not gonna, you're not gonna see a water increase, you were gonna, the franchise fee, no. Something goes away, it's still taxpayer dollars that are being shifted around like a little shell game. It isn't that they're not gonna pay it, they are paying it already, they've already paid it in taxes, whatever's in our general fund, whatever's on our reserves. Was paid by tax dollars, we want to shift it around to say, oh, we're taking care of your water increase, you won't see that, you won't see franchise fees. You won't see this, you won't see that, you paid for it already. All we're doing is trying to fool somebody and uh. I'm not being fooled, and I don't think anybody up here is being fooled, but uh, we can't keep squeezing this lemon. Because people expect a certain level of service, and if we start cutting all these positions, we should have filled them by now. And I know, it's impossible, it's not the director's fault, it's not that they'd love to have it filled, but we should have filled it by now. And if there was a problem that we couldn't fill it, then that should have been discussed with us and see how we can adjust the budget to be able to. I don't know, provide a better offer to people so they can come in, but we certainly can't make this run with a hundred less employees. These vacancies seem very attractive to cut into, but.
Yes.
This is not the solution.
Through the chair?
This is very dangerous.
Yes, through the chair, and I, and I, I do have um. Agreements, you know, with that, um, I, I'm very surprised though that there's so many positions that are vacant for so long. I, I do agree, we should be filling these positions, uh, we have more residents, things need to run smoother, run quicker. Um. But I'm very surprised there's so many, and, and, and so many that department heads don't even know that they have, right, or that they're posted, right? Uh, I would have thought that all of these would have been posted, so. You know, I think we've all spoken about this several times, um. We've gone back and forth, and I, again, right, this is a time where our residents need relief, I think um. I think that's been expressed to us many, many times. Um, you know, I would like to put in a motion um, to amend. You know, I would like to put in a motion um, to amend two hundred, but I, I've always been very vocal that I thought that the reimbursement should be no minimum of two fifty, minimum two fifty. And because I think this will help, right? Um, the prices of things are going up, the cost of living is going up, and so I do think the two fifty will help. Our residents continue to, to invest in our city and they pay their taxes. And I think this is a simple form of us giving back to them and showing that we are here to help. So I hope that the council can agree with me um, with a two fifty reimbursement.
It's funny, a question for you.
Thank you.
Question for you. So these dollars that we have that were, we haven't spent, can this dollars used, be used to give races to our top performers?
We can.
You can?
We can.
So an example, I'm sorry, in any department or how does that?
For, for, it's allocated to the particular department.
Gotcha.
So one of the things that there might be, and maybe Elsa can, can answer this question, although she came in twenty twenty one as well. In um, in twenty sixteen, the city had a little bit over three hundred employees more than we have today. So um, some of those positions might have been lagging for years. And they might still be in the books because departments just have not, have not filled them, right? Um, I think that with Kevin, he would probably love to hire more positions. He just can't afford to. Um, so I think that that's, you know, it's part of the, part of the whole issue here.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
This two hundred dollars, first it was seventy something, sixty something. Uh, the first, and then one twenty, then two hundred and two fifty. Two hundred is sixteen dollars a month. A one-time payment to those residents, sixteen dollars a month. That ain't gonna change their lives in any way. Two hundred and fifty dollars is twenty dollars a month. That is not gonna change their life anyway. And the exchange is our services are going to suffer. I think that any true resident of Hialeah would prefer to have better services than have a one-time two hundred, one twenty, two hundred, two hundred and fifty dollar uh, a rebate. And it's, it's, it's a facade. And it's a one-time thing. It's a, sets a terrible precedent. It, it doesn't significantly change or improve anybody's life. It is not gonna get you out of poverty. It is not gonna get you from uh, e- eating a sandwich a day to eating a steak a day. It is insignificant. I believe that this should be tabled completely until the politics are out of it, until the elections are over. And then it could be looked at in a way that makes sense, not just trying to earn points in stunts to, to earn points for, for campaigns. And I'm not talking about anybody in specific. I'm talking about everybody. I don't think this should be discussed now because this was never discussed before. And now that we're in the season we're in now, now everybody's competing, and it's a terrible idea. I, as a resident of Hialeah and my neighbors and everybody that I know, they don't need that, that, their lives are not gonna change for this two hundred dollars one-time reimbursement. They'd rather have a city that runs better. Everybody's complaining about that. It's very difficult to do anything in this city anymore because of the delays. There's not enough employees. Things used to get done better and, and it was easier. There's not enough employees. And I think that this is a bad idea to try to compete now. Who's gonna give more so they can come out and say, oh, I got you this much and I got you that much. Anyway, it's all coming out of taxpayer dollars. Everything we're subsidizing is still taxpayer dollars. Nobody's making anything disappear. And if we give a rebate, it comes with the exchange in exchange for worse and diminished services. Let's be honest about it. And that's the truth of the matter.
Thank you. Through the chair. Yeah, so um, again, these, the, the thing about a rebate is that you're always gonna get it back next year, right? So this is a one-time thing. I think we've discussed all the reasons why we need to provide some relief this year, Imari. And I wanna, I wanna also note that, that, that we've been fighting for, for, for greater relief for a long time. Uh, two fifty is something that I could compromise on. Um, I think uh, that's all you're hearing in the street, right? That's all you're hearing in the street. FPL went up eleven percent on the, on the electric, on the electrical bill. That's right, that's right. But it's, it's about, it's about them, not us, right? And so, um, I think, I think I, I'm, I'm, I'm good, I'm good with, with, with that, with that amendment. I think people really need that help. So I, I second that, that, that motion.
And through the chair, I do want to mention that we were here two weeks ago. And I made a statement, and I said it. I said, we're going to approve this, and next meeting, we're going to have trouble coming up with an agreement. And people up here gave their word that they were going to find relief to the residents. So I really hope that this council can come together and give something back to the residents. And go through with your word.
Through the chair.
Yes. It isn't about them. It isn't about them. It's for people who are running for election. That's what it's all about. This stunt is not about the people. It's about being at, go, being able to go out there and brag about what a discount they gave you. And the discount is so insignificant, and only a, a, a child would think that it matters. Uh, I mean, nobody who owns their house and has worked their whole lives would think that this, this is an insult. So it isn't about the people. It's about everybody who's running for office here in this dais, trying to earn points. If you wanted to help the people, you improve the city, the city services. You don't just give thirty-two thousand residents a break. What about those people who live in apartments? What about those people, you know, uh, uh, other people who don't have their homes? So you're just giving a very limited relief to a limited amount of people, a very small relief to a limited amount of people. So it isn't about helping the people. It's about a, a, a campaign stunt. That's what it is. That's what happens when a lot of people sitting on the dais are all running for reelection or running for office for the first time. You see this sad thing going on and what it is, and it's not genuine. It's not genuine at all. And it's gonna cost our budget a ton of money. The subsidizing the water sounds beautiful. Again, it's taxpayer dollars. Nothing is going away in reality. It's just a, a, a smokescreen. That's what I have to say.
Ms. Delavega?
Yes.
Is that as amended?
Yes.
Okay.
She made a motion to approve a rebate amending the amount to two hundred and fifty dollars.
It was the second.
Yes.
So, so I just want to clarify that you're voting on the amount as amended.
Fifty is the motion.
Motion to amend.
Right, okay.
Ms. Delavega?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez? Mr. Tundidor?
Yes.
Mr. Zogby?
No.
Mr. Junco?
No.
Motion fails at the pleasure of the council.
Okay, so now we have, we can actually go vote on the, on the original one.
We need a motion, sir, yes.
Okay, so wanna have a motion on the first? Do we have a motion on the mayor's? We're just gonna draw.
We need a motion in order to move forward.
Yeah, you need a motion in a second in order to move forward.
Any motion?
With any amount.
Next item, then.
Yeah, all right. Hold on a second. A motion.
Okay, motion. Can I get a second?
We're motioning on all right, hold on a second. Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Tundidor?
Yes.
Mr. Zogby?
No.
Mr. Junco? Ms. Delavega?
Yes.
Motion carries. The item is approved. Second reading and public hearing is scheduled for October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. First reading of proposed ordinance repealing and rescinding Hialeah ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash zero three nine attached here to as exhibit eight. Granting a special use permit to allow the expansion of the neighborhood business district overly pursuant to Hialeah Court of Ordnances, section ninety-eight dash one six three zero point eight. Granting a variance permit to allow forty residential units with an area ranging from six hundred and twenty to six hundred and ninety-three square feet, where eight hundred and fifty square feet is a minimum required. And only ten percent of the units may have an area less than eight hundred and fifty square feet. And a variance to waive the building mass and frontage development standards. All in contrast to Hialeah Court of Ordnesses, sections ninety-eight dash one six three zero point two and ninety-eight dash one six three zero point two subsections C and D. Property located at thirty-eight seventy-five West Sixteenth Avenue, Hialeah, Zoned M one industrial district, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing penalties for violation hereof, providing for a severability clause and providing for an effective date, and allow only residential units where mixed use is required.
Claudia Hasbun, five oh one Palm Avenue, planning and zoning official. Uh, so basically, this is a uh, rescinding an ordinance that it got approved back in twenty twenty-three. And they haven't moved forward with any of the um entitlements that they need to receive. No side plants, no building permits, none, nothing.
Can I have a motion or comments?
Repeat the last part that you just said, that they don't.
They have not submitted any side plants or any building permits that are required to be submitted within a timeframe that they stipulated. So this project was approved for a special use permit um, for a residential and mixed use, and they haven't moved forward.
Okay. All right, motion?
Sorry, through the chair. So are you, are you saying that they haven't submitted any of the required paperwork?
That's correct. So one, once you approve, once you approve a, a project, which is under a special use permit to extend the neighborhood business district, you provide them with a timeline. So it doesn't create speculations within the redevelopment, you know, process. Um, so you tell them within twelve months, you have to come for a side plan. Within an additional twelve months, you come for a building permit. So none of those steps, they had been started by the applicant. So now we are rescinding that special use permit.
So we're rescinding it?
Yes.
Okay.
Through uh, the council president now. It's customary for the city to do these recisions from time to time when people have not submitted the required permits within the time required in the legislation which approved. Well, no, it's, you're, you're rescinding it, you're repealing it.
Second.
Big roll, please.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Tundidor is absent. Mr. Zogby is absent. Ms. Delavega?
Yes.
Mr. Junco?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Motion carries. The item is approved. Second reading and public hearing is scheduled for October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. Item eleven D, proposed resolution authorizing the mayor or her designee on behalf of the city to enter into an agreement in order to access certain exempt information maintained by the property appraiser of Miami-Dade County, a copy of which is attached here to and made a part hereof as exhibit eight, and provided for an effective date.
Through the council president, this is required by the um county property appraiser in order to uh, give the city any uh, exempt information that the city would need in order to process any rebates.
We need, oh, we need, we need a motion.
Motion. I'm sorry.
No.
I need somebody else to do a motion, please.
City attorney, can you repeat what you were saying? I was trying to read it.
So there's certain exempt information involving first responders and things like that, which are exempt from disclosure. And in order to share that information with the city, uh, the Dade County Property Appraiser requires this agreement with the city uh, in order to furnish any information that might be uh needed to process the rebates.
No, I understand, but then why did we have then a number of how many residents with a number of how many first responders? Was that an estimated guess of how many first responders were in the city? Because the paperwork that we got said that we had about three hundred and twenty properties that were accounted for first responders. How did we get that number?
Well, madam member, when I don't know, I'm candid. I'll tell you, I don't know. I, I, I didn't furnish that number, and I have no idea uh, on what basis that number was furnished, so I, I, I don't have an answer.
It's an estimate? Where did we? Can you, can you turn on the microphone?
I apologize. So until we send uh, the request to the property appraisers, we won't have the exact number.
But how did we land at three twenty-eight? That seems pretty exact instead of saying three hundred.
It was an average based on, on the, on the numbers of first responders that we, that we have in police and fire, and what we asked the former property appraiser to give us sort of like an estimate.
Okay, all right, thank you. Didn't we have to submit this paperwork, though, at a certain timeframe to meet? Didn't we already vote on this the last previous meeting?
No.
We had to request, no, we had to pass something by a certain time to meet a deadline to ask the property appraiser for this information.
That's now when we passed the, the um.
Well, you're, you're gonna, okay, so now this, this ordinance will go to second reading, and at some point, right, let's say there'll be some kind of distribution. You need that agreement uh, in place because otherwise you won't have that uh, for the exempt people, you won't, they won't give you that, and they won't furnish that information. Again, I don't want to speak for them, but that's my understanding.
Yeah, it's this ordinance that needs to pass.
Okay, so motion ready.
Motion. I get a second, please?
Second.
Take roll.
Mr. Tundidor is absent. Mr. Zogby is absent. Ms. Delavega?
Yes.
Mr. Junco?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Motion carries. The item is approved.
Yes, I'm sorry. Let's take a five-minute recess, please.
Five minutes. Oh, no, okay, hold on, hold on. Let me take his, his and, and.
If I can just quickly report a new business item to the um, council. Uh, this is on September twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. The city council approved consent item ten H issuing a purchase order of Alega General Services, Inc. to provide meal service for monthly senior dances for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. The item is being amended to reflect ratification of expenditures made in fiscal year twenty twenty-five.
Okay, and this is for?
This is a report of a Scrivener's error.
Okay, gotcha.
And then we just, before he speaks, if we can swear in everyone who will be testifying on an item, please, in planning and zoning.
Everybody's gonna be testifying?
Do you swear or affirm that the evidence you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God, if so, say I do. Let the record reflect that all have responded in the affirmative. Item fifteen B. Second reading and public hearing of proposed ordinance resoning property from R three multiple family district to R three five, multiple family district. Granting a variance permit to allow a front setback of ten feet where twenty-five feet are required for the ground floor. Allow a front setback of seven feet where twenty-five feet are required for balconies fronting West Second Avenue. Allow an interior south setback of five feet where ten feet are required. Allow a street side setback of five point seventy-five feet where fifteen feet are required. Allow a lock coverage of forty-one percent where thirty percent is the maximum allowed. Allow a two-foot landscape buffer fronting West Twenty-seventh Street where a minimum seven-foot buffer is required. And allow eight parking spaces where ten parking spaces are required. All in contrast to Hialeah Court of Ordnesses, sections ninety-eight dash five eighty-nine, ninety-eight dash five ninety, ninety-eight dash twenty-one eighty-nine subsection nineteen B and sections and section sections E entitled tree and lawn requirements by zoning classification and D seven entitled shrubs, vines, ground covers, mulch, buffers, plant quality, stormwater retention and detention areas, native species and landscape mitigation of the Hialeah Landscape Manual updated July of twenty twenty-five. Property located at one ninety West Twenty-seventh Street, Hialeah, Zoned R three, multiple family district, and legally described herein. Repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing penalties for violation hereof, providing for a severability clause and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Item's over for second reading. Any comments or questions from the public?
I'm motion.
We got a motion? Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Please take roll.
Mr. Zogby?
Yes.
Ms. Delavega?
She's out.
Ms. Delavega is absent. Mr. Junco?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Tundidor is absent. Motion carries. The item is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, council members. Have a blessed night.
Thank you. Council, would you like to take a break for a couple of minutes or continue?
No, I.
Monica, you good?
Do you need to take my votes on?
No, remember, we're not doing that anymore.
We're not doing that anymore.
Saying you're absent.
Do I get paid?
You still get paid, but please see our memo if you have any questions. Particularly on quasi-judicial items like zoning. Thank you.
So what does that mean? All the votes we did before and that? Next item, please.
Item fifteen A, second reading and public. Item fifteen A, second reading and public hearing of proposed ordinance granting a special use permit to allow the expansion of the neighborhood business district overlay in relation to a proposed mixed-use development, including thirty-two residential units and approximately three thousand five hundred and twenty square feet of commercial space pursuant to Hialeah Court of Ordnance is section ninety-eight dash one six one. Granting a variance permit to allow fifty-six parking spaces where sixty-five parking spaces are required, required. Allow twenty-one percent pervious area where thirty percent is a minimum required. And allow a partial waiver of minimum landscape requirements through landscape mitigation as per section ninety-eight dash two-two-three-five. All in contrast to Hialeah Court of Ordnance is section ninety-eight dash twenty-one eighty-nine subsection four J and ninety-eight dash two-zero-five-six subsection B one. Properties located at nine zero one East Second Avenue and nine twenty-five East Second Avenue. Hialeah Zone CR, Commercial Residential District and Legally Described Herein. Repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing penalties for violation hereof, providing for a severability clause and providing for an effective date.
Items from second reading. Any comments or questions?
Motion.
Got a motion. Can I have a sec? And I'm take roll.
Excuse me, one second, one correction. The parking requirements have been met. Okay, so there's no variance for the parking.
Will you please clarify that, Claudia?
Uh, for the record, the parking count has been met. The maximum, the the required is fifty-six, and they are providing fifty-six parking spaces.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, in the first reading, we said allowing fifty-six or sixty-five are required. That's no longer the case.
No.
Okay, so we will amend the ordinance to reflect there's no variance permit for parking being requested.
That's correct.
Yeah, so um Ms. Perez, your motion then would be amended. We have a motion by Ms. Perez and a second by Mr. Zogby, Mr. Junco? Ms. Delavega is absent. Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Tundido?
Yes.
Mr. Zogby?
Yes.
Motion carries. The item is approved as amended.
I agree. Thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody. Good evening.
Good evening.
Item fifteen C, second reading and public hearing of proposed ordinance granting a variance permit to allow a lock coverage of forty-nine percent where forty-five percent is the maximum lock coverage allowed. Allow an interior east side setback of nine inches where five feet are required. Allow a parking setback of twenty feet where fifty-five feet are required. Allow eight parking spaces where nine parking spaces are required. Allow the proposed dumpster enclosure to be three point seven feet from the right of way fronting East Eighth Street where ten feet is the minimum required. And allow twenty-two percent pervious area where thirty percent pervious area is the minimum required. All in contrast to Hialeah Court of Ordnance is section ninety-eight dash six-four-two subsection one, ninety-eight dash six-four-one subsection B ninety-eight dash six-six-four-one subsection G, ninety-eight dash two-one-eight-nine subsection nineteen C, ninety-eight dash two-two-zero-three subsection eight, seventy-eight dash one-zero-eight subsection C one and section E of the Hialeah Landscape Manual updated July of two thousand and twenty-five entitled tree and lawn requirements by zoning classification. Property located at one twenty-five East Eighth Street, Hialeah, zoned R three D, multi-family district Hialeah Downtown and Legally Described Herein. Repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing penalties for violation hereof, providing for a severability clause and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Items open for, excuse me, second reading, open for public comments, question? Can I have a motion or any comments or question from the council?
Motion.
Can a motion? Can I have a second?
Say good.
Roll.
Ms. Delavega is absent. Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Tundido?
Absent.
Mr. Tundido is absent. Mr. Zogby?
Yes.
Mr. Junco?
Yes.
Motion carries. The item is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item fifteen D, second reading and public hearing of proposed ordinance granting a conditional use permit pursuant to City of Hialeah Court of Ordnance is section ninety-eight dash one eighty-one to allow a kindergarten class with a maximum capacity of nine students in conjunction with a forty-two children daycare. Allow a variance permit to allow three parking spaces fronting East Twentieth Street and one parking space fronting East Fourth Avenue to back out into the right of way where back out parking is only allowed in low-density residential properties. Allow a twenty-one-foot accessway to perpendicular parking spaces where twenty-two feet are required. And allow seven percent pervious area where eighteen percent is a minimum pervious area required. In contrast to City of Hialeah Court of Ordnance is section ninety-eight dash twenty-one ninety, ninety-eight dash twenty-one eighty-eight parentheses A, A. And in contrast to Hialeah Landscape Manual updated July two thousand and twenty-five section E entitled tree and lawn requirements by zoning classification. Property located at two zero one nine East Fourth Avenue, Hialeah, zoned B one, highly restricted retail district and Legally Described Herein. Repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing penalties for violation hereof, providing for a severability clause and providing for an effective date.
Through the chair? Yes, sir. Oh, I'm sorry, sir. Did you want to make a presentation?
No, not not at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Claudia, um, just one question. So, okay, we're approving this with the um conditions that were laid out by the planning and zoning, right? In other words, no more backing into the right of way, no more?
Except for one backing into East Fourth Avenue and the three parking spaces that they are um facing um uh Twentieth Street.
One, one space will back into the avenue.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I motion. Okay, get a motion.
Second.
Please take roll.
Ms. Delavega is absent. Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Tundido is absent. Mr. Zogby?
Yes.
Mr. Junco?
Yes.
Motion carries. The item is approved.
Thank you.
Sir, did we open this item for public participation?
Yes, he did.
Okay, thank you. Fifth, item fifteen E, second reading and public hearing of proposed ordinance granting a special use permit to allow a clinical research center conducting clinical trials to test new drugs, devices, and other forms of treatment pursuant to Hialeah Court of Ordnance is section ninety-eight dash one six one. Property located at thirty-seven fifty West Sixteenth Avenue, suite two-three-six U, Hialeah, zoned M one Industrial District and Legally Described in Exhibit A. Repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing penalties for violation hereof, providing for a severability clause and providing for an effective date.
Items for second reading, open for public comments or question? What's the pleasure of the council?
Motion.
Got a motion? Can I have a second?
Say good.
Miss, um.
Ms. Perez?
No, you have any questions? No, oh, I'm sorry.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Tundido is absent. Mr. Zogby?
Yes.
Mr. Junco?
Yes.
Ms. Delavega is absent. Motion carries. The item is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item.
Item fifteen F. First reading of proposed ordinance rezoning property from R three, multiple family district to R three-three, multiple family district. Granting a variance permit to allow a living unit where parking spaces are provided, allow an existing structure with the following setbacks. Rear setback of six point ninety-one feet where twenty feet are required, an interior east side setback of two point one feet where ten feet are required. An interior west side setback of one point two feet where ten feet are required. Allow a proposed three-story structure with the following setbacks. A front setback of seventeen point forty-one feet where twenty-five feet are required. An interior east side setback of two point sixty-six feet where ten feet are required. An interior west side setback of five feet where ten feet are required. Allow a total lock coverage of forty-six point eighty percent where thirty percent is the maximum lock coverage allowed. And to allow six parking spaces where seven parking spaces are required. All in contrast to Hialeah Court of Ordnance is sections ninety-eight dash five nine five subsection B, ninety-eight dash five nine one, ninety-eight dash five nine zero, ninety-eight dash five eight nine, ninety-eight dash twenty-one eighty-nine subsection nineteen B and ninety-eight dash twenty-two zero three subsection eight. Property located at seventy-six West Fourteenth Street, Hialeah, zoned R three, multiple fa- multiple family district and Legally Described Herein. Repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing penalties for violation hereof, providing for a severability clause and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Items of first reading. Any comments or questions from the council? Uh, through the chair.
Yes, sir.
Are you uh the owner or representative?
I'm the owner.
Can you just give us, because I've got like seven screens open, just a little background, what are you building here? How many units? What is it?
Two units.
Two units on? What's your name and, sorry, what's your name and address, please? Can you add a post to it, please? Thank you, Jose. Appreciate that.
My name is Jose Peña, the owner of the property located at seven, eh, seventy-six West Fourteenth Street.
Thank you, sir. And then your, your address, for the record, your address.
Yeah. Mine?
Yes, you're.
One thirty-one, ten Southwest, one eighteen, three, Miami, Florida, thirty-three, one, eight.
Thank you, thank you. The two units, is it duplex?
I would say duplex.
Do, how many bedrooms?
Two.
Two each?
Two each. Um, one, one ba- full bathroom and and half.
One and a half baths each?
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. Oh, one second. Claudia, did you want to add anything, please?
Um, yes, um, just to clarify, so the property has an existing unit in the back of the property, okay? And that unit is to remain. Very interesting project. So the unit was built back in nineteen thirty-nine, and they're keeping the unit in the back, and they're building like um, like a duplex style at the front of the property.
So it'll be a total of how many units?
Three units in total.
Well, that's why it needed the additional parking space.
That's correct.
How many unit, how many bedrooms is the existing unit in the back?
The exist, the existing has three, three bedrooms. Three bedrooms, but it has the proper, you know, parking area.
In the rear?
In the rear.
Oh, okay.
Yes, they have a garage and everything in the rear.
Okay, and they have obvious access on one side, obviously, yeah, thank you. I motion.
I motion?
Mm-hmm.
Can I have a sec? Say good. Roll.
Roll.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Tundido is absent. Mr. Zogby?
Yes.
Ms. Delavega is absent. Mr. Junco?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Motion carries. The item is approved. Second reading and public hearing is scheduled for October twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item fifteen G, first reading of proposed ordinance granting a variance permit to allow the expansion of an existing non-conforming two hundred and fifty-six square feet manual car wash business granted by ordinance ninety dash one-three-nine issuing a special use permit to allow said use on properties zoned B one, highly restricted retail district where manual car wash use has never been a permitted use in the B one zoning classification where non-conforming manual car washes are only allowed on properties zoned C one, restricted retail commercial district and C two, liberal retail commercial district. And where a declaration of restrictive covenant was proffered in nineteen ninety stating that the manual car wash would comply with sections A through G of ordinance number eighty-nine dash eighty-one. Allow one hundred and four parking spaces where the existing shopping center was approved with one hundred and six parking spaces and where one hundred and fifteen parking spaces are required and a variance permit to allow landscape mitigation of fifteen canopy trees where only four canopy trees currently exist at the site that was originally approved with twenty canopy trees. All in contrast to Hialeah Court of Ordnance is section ninety-eight dash twenty-one eighty-nine subsection seven and section D sub twelve A of the Hialeah Landscape Manual updated July of two thousand and twenty-five entitled waiver of minimum landscaping requirements, landscape mitigation. Property located at fifty-three fifty West Twelve Avenue, Hialeah, zoned B one, highly restricted retail district and Legally Described Herein. Repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing penalties for violation hereof, providing for a severability clause and providing for an effective date.
Items open for second reading.
No, this is on first reading.
First reading. Thank you, Caesar. How you doing?
Good. Caesar administered offices at eighty-one oh five Northwest, one fifty-fifth Street, Miami Lakes, Florida. I have a presentation. Uh, with me today with me today is Javier Gaetan and Julián Pérez, and I'll explain to you who they are uh shortly. You see, this is a variance permit and a special use per, actually, we already have the special use permit to allow the car wash that has existed for over thirty-five years. Next slide. Little history here. This is the, the shopping center that's on the corner of West Twelve and five-three. Um, Los tres monitos is there, and this car wash, as I said before, has been there for over thirty-five years. Next slide. Both the land use and the zoning are commercial for this property. Next. I'm gonna take you back and show you some of the aerial photographs uh that the county has, and they only go back to nineteen ninety-nine. So that's where I'm gonna start. If you see on this slide, there's a red uh, sir, a red uh rectangle there. And if you see those roofs, that's what we're talking about. Remember, the car wash has a special use permit from nineteen eighty-nine, from nineteen ninety and has been existence ever since. In nineteen ninety-nine, which is the furthest that I can go back, they already existed, the two roofs that we're talking about. The small one, which is the one on the top, that was done legally with permits and permission. And the second one, which is the one you see on the bottom of the rectangle there, that was done. There is no permit in the city for that roof. But my client tells me that there was a person that he paid to do it, and he thought that they had done it. Everyone looked for it, uh zoning looked for it, the city looked for it, we looked for it. There is no permit for that one, so we're not gonna say that there was. If you look at the next slide, this is two thousand and nine. You see that the same structures are there, nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand and nine. Go to the next one, twenty nineteen. The two uh roofs are there. You see them on the property in exactly the same place. Nothing has changed. There was a resident that submitted a letter at P and Z uh saying that there was a problem with the noise. Uh, remember, this is really about the parking variance and the ability to keep um, that bigger roof that was there that we can find no permit for. If you look at the next slide, if you see the car wash, you see the shopping center directly to the north. That big avenue that you see on the right side is West Twelfth Avenue. There's houses across the street, which is four lanes away. And the property to the north, as you can see, it's mostly vacant. There's a church there, but as you can see, it's mostly vacant. Next slide. This is a closer-up picture of the property directly to the north. As I said, it's a church that's uh obviously uh mostly works on on Sundays and other day. The next slide, this is the property directly to the west on the left side. It's a three-story multi-family building. And if you look at the picture on the right side, you'll see that directly south of the shopping center is three-story multi-family residences again. So I'd like to give you a, a little bit of background. Javier Gaetan is the one that opened the car wash back in nineteen ninety. He operated it from nineteen ninety till about eight years ago, so we're talking about two thousand and eighteen. In two thousand and eighteen, he sold it to somebody else to operate the car wash. At that time, he had such a good relationship with the owner of the shopping center that he became the property manager. So he's not the owner of the car wash. He's now the property manager for that shopping center. The other gentleman here is the person that wants to buy the lease to be able to continue to operate the car wash. They came to the city, Gaetan did, with him, and they wanted to just change the BTR from the person that bought it, sold it to the person that has a, a BTR now. Since it wasn't sold because Gaetan has been in that shopping center for thirty-five years, saw that the person that owned it last was running it into the ground. They were putting supplies out, they abandoned the property, they didn't keep it up. They have painted it now, they removed the shed that was put there. He's trying to bring it up to code. To, not to code, but aesthetically to look a lot better than what it's looked in the past couple of years. When they came to the city, they were told, listen, yeah, you have a car wash, yeah, you have permission to have it. Yes, you have permission and permits to do the small roof, but you do not have permission or permits to have the big roof. So they come with this process to see if they can legalize the big roof. Their issue is, next slide. Their issue is, next slide. Their issue is that in order, and actually staff was very nice in zoning, they came up with a drawing that said, when you got this car wash, you had permission to have five hundred and sixty feet of roof. You're over by a hundred and fifty-six feet if we put them both together. So get rid of both of them and do a new one, that's five hundred and sixty square feet. Have everything that you need there, provide the shade for the customers, provide the area that you need, provide for storage, that's fine. The only issue is, this is the proposal that they have, that I found out after the last P and Z hearing. It's gonna cost them in excess of fifty-five thousand dollars just for the structure. If we take into account permits, um, plans, et cetera, surveys, it's gonna be close to eighty, sub, between seventy to eighty thousand dollars. So the ask today is that they be allowed to keep the big roof and the small roof for a small period of time, we were talking about maybe two years, to allow them to have the time to build the capital to build that five hundred and sixty square foot unit as suggested by zoning. So that is the ask, we're asking you to allow them to keep the five hundred and, the, the, the bigger roof along with the smaller roof that's been there now, as I showed you in the photographs for thirty-five years, and just allow them time to gather the capital because this gentleman is somebody that's just coming new into business. He's starting from scratch and he just needs a little time to put that together. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Um, Claudia, so the business right now, it's, it's, it's open right now.
I'm sorry.
Is it, the business is open right now, correct?
It's closed.
Okay. Caesar, I've gotten quite a few calls from residents on this particular case, uh, some concerns. Um, it's a residential area that there's a lot of beer drinking, drug use in the back, dirtiness, it's just that, that right. So just so you can know, or I don't know if you, I don't know of building a zoning, did, did the voice?
The, the reason I showed you the red, the, the area directly adjacent to it is to show you that there are no residences right next to it, number one. Number two.
The one to the right complained.
The, the ones to the east are across Twelfth Avenue. The ones to the north is the church, that's mostly vacant land. The one to the west is the three-story apartment buildings and the one to the south is three-story apartment buildings. And also like to point out.
I'm telling you, they, they called me, the ones, yeah, it's, yeah, but I, I received it on the phone.
And I, I'd also like to point out that the reason it's closed now is because Mr. Gaetan, the one who started it thirty-five years ago, saw what was happening and told the owner, we're not gonna renew the lease. And that's why they're here now, because he decided, look, this is not good, this is not good for the areas, this is not good for the shopping center. So let's close it down and we'll find somebody else that can come and run it the way it's supposed to be run, the way he did for thirty years.
Sorry.
No, I'm. You, you have to, you have to give your name and address if you're gonna address the council.
Javier Gaetan on behalf of Hasintolam, fifty-three fifty West Twelfth Avenue.
Yes, sir.
Like, you will mention about criminality and drinking and drug, and drug stuff. For the last, uh, ten months, I've been working on it and I have several of no trespassing cases against all the people they've been there drinking and doing the wrong stuff.
Got you. Okay, he's showing you a police report, case number assigned.
Got you.
So he's working on trying to clean it up as the m- manager for the property, not necessarily the car wash. The car wash is gonna be somebody brand new that he's gonna make sure runs it the way it's supposed to be run. But remember, we're talking about the ability to keep that structure.
No, I understand.
The, the car wash actually has a special permit that it needs.
Got you.
I'm sorry, if I may to the chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, why does he have a, what's going on that he had to get a no trespassing?
He's the property manager and he has seen that there's a bad element that's been hanging out there. So he's been calling the police.
At the car wash crew.
Then why I didn't extend the lease to the previous owner because they had a really bad element there, some drugs, drinking.
As part of the car wash crew that was there?
As part of the car wash crew?
No, not as a part, part of his crew. They're just people coming on the street and sit down there and drinking and.
If, if they start coming and you don't get rid of them right away, then they.
But why didn't he renew the lease of that person that was running the car wash? Because.
Because they were, they were allowing that to occur.
Okay, and then this gentleman is new to this whole process.
Completely.
But I thought he owned it previously.
He owned it previously.
Oh.
Eight years ago, he's the one that started it, that's why.
And then he became the pro, okay.
And then he became the property manager when he sold it eight years ago.
Got it.
Sold it to one gentleman, gentleman sells it to a lady, the lady's the one that runs it into the grounds and he says, no more lease for you, we need to get rid of you.
Yes.
I operated that business for twenty-seven years and then had a problem. Mister, pretty good mention.
Yeah, cuz I agree, I've heard complaints of that, that shopping center. We have someone that we know very often hangs out there, has gotten into a lot of issues with crime in that shopping center. So it's just, you know, now hearing that it was originated because there was some connection to the car wash, at least you're being proactive in, and, and how many of those police reports do you have? That you?
Four.
Several.
Total of four people.
Okay, and that was while that woman was managing that car wash?
The, the, uh, their report is reasonable.
Recently, while it's been closed?
When they closed, yes, and I have two of them that when was she was operating the business.
Hmm, okay.
I mean, I, I hate to restrict business openings, but it's just that, that particular, I'm sorry, Claudia.
I'm through the chair, just to make clear, when this project went back to planning and zoning board, actually, we presented with two options. So planning and zoning board recommended one of the two options. This is not customary, so I just wanna make sure. The option one that they voted on to approve it, it was that the existing unpermitted four hundred and sixty square feet, so the, um, the big structure will be demolished, removed immediately and maintain the existing permitted two hundred and fifty-six, which is the smaller one, for a feed aluminum roof until, um, building permits are obtained for the new larger, um, roof or canopy area for the car wash. Or the option number two is, um, that the existing unpermitted, um, and the small one will be, uh, also replaced with the larger one. So those were the two options that they discussed during the planning and so, uh, planning and zoning board meeting.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And, and just so the record is clear, I and my clients did agree to remove the larger one immediately at P and Z. Subsequent to that is when I received the proposal of how much it was going to cost. So, and that's why I'm asking now for, for additional time.
Good, sorry.
No, no.
Okay, actually, go.
Let me understand this, you're asking for two years for him to build the new roof, the one that's there now is unpermitted. Uh, that will not be removed in need of one of them?
One of the two.
Yeah.
Well, actually, the two years, they both get removed because they're going to be replaced with one that's five hundred and sixty square feet, square feet, which is within what they're allowed to do.
What you're asking for is that the two unpermitted roofs remain until?
One is permitted and one is not.
What, what, the, the larger one is not?
Correct.
Isn't, the thing that worries me, an unpermitted roof also, uh, equates to perhaps, uh, unsafe? Are we, are we taking a chance if there's a storm that that thing could blow away?
It's been there for thirty-five years and it's been through a lot of storms.
My grandmother was around for ninety years and one day she broke and she was no longer around.
Yeah.
Just for the record, of course, this is an unpermitted structure, so the city will be, if allowing, it will be taking liability onto what is the, you know, unpermitted structure to remain there. Also, the larger roof is in the middle of a driveway. Um, we wouldn't approved, that building to be approved since the beginning of it, it's blocking the driveway and parking spaces.
Council president.
Yes, sir.
If it's the will of the council to consider this, you can also ask the applicant if they're willing to proffer, hold harmless for many accidents, any liabilities having to do with the structures, period, if, if you're willing to consider it.
And do you think that would be solid?
Well, it depends on their solvency, which I'm not, I can't guarantee or vouch for, you know, without, yeah.
Neglect on our part before has cost us a lot of money and, uh.
Yes, there is some, I mean, you know, I guess you can take, it's, it's, you know, it's policy, you could take solace in that the applicant is representing, there haven't been claims in thirty-five years. I have no knowledge of that, but, um, once the city takes action, uh, approving it, there, there is the penumbra, the possibility that the city is somehow.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah.
Yes.
Incidentally involved.
What's in it for us? It's a, it's a chance we're taking. And if, if he removes the roof, then can, can he operate without the roof immediately?
Um, well, option one is for them to maintain the smaller roof so they can keep on up.
To what?
The option one that planning and zoning approved is actually to maintain the smaller footprint, the smaller canopy, so they can continue their business with the smaller canopy that they currently have.
The bigger one.
And the, the bigger one, immediately.
Yeah.
Claudia, a question for you, um, but I guess I'm asking because there is complaints about that area, if not, I wouldn't be talking about it. There is complaints about drug use, drinking beer, et cetera, et cetera. How could we put any restrictions or anything as far as keeping the, whoever's gonna be managing there and be sure that the community's safe? Especially after, in the weekends is what I've been hearing.
Um, it's, I mean, the, the, the police chief is there, but maybe, uh, uh, what?
Say we have three offenses, could we, I don't wanna close you down, so, I mean, so, okay, so for, for the first time in a long time, there's been a very loud voice in the community about your car wash. It's just happening and I can't ignore it. So, I mean, so as a council, my concern is more as far as the environment for the residents, for the residents, very expensive homes back there, people elderly that live around there and they're, they're voicing, okay? So that's what my concern is, that, uh.
Last will be under the owner of the property, owner as well, and they will, he had, he will.
Other words, if we, my, my question will be.
Into the microphone.
Sorry, get close to the microphone.
For the record, please, Nathan.
He said it, right? Yes. Sorry, Caesar. If we, um, agree in the declaration of restrictions to hire security on the weekends or at night to, okay, it's, it sounds, and I'm, I'm not familiar, I'm, I'm guessing. It sounds like a shopping center issue, not just a.
It is a shop.
Car wash.
It is a shopping issue, but that's good of, and, and, and I'm very.
Since he's the manager of the shopping center.
Okay.
I'm asking him if he would agree to hire security to clean it up.
I'm, I'm. But, but I.
Through the chair?
Yes, sir.
I'm taking this as well.
I remember, I, I, I went many a times there, I remember you, very nice fella. I don't think the problem is the car wash, the problem is that restaurant that's in the back, that's a very bad hotspot and that's what's creating the problems in the weekends and at night.
That's what it was.
It's that, that restaurant right there, not necessarily the car wash. I don't remember when I went there as a customer seeing any particular issues.
Well, well, he's since.
That comes from that, that restaurant there.
Yeah, I think it was a combination of things, the, probably the restaurant, but the car wash manager or owner at the time not putting a stop to it. So as I said before, when they start coming and nobody tells them, you gotta leave, you gotta leave, then it, it escalated to something that nobody wanted.
I'm sorry, Mr. Turner, you were gonna say something. I was just gonna mention that, you know, that anything that, that the council requests if they wish to consider the car wash is, is fair game, but, uh, getting into the shopping center in general, uh, goes beyond the scope of the application.
Yeah, that's true. Well, I, I, I personally don't have a problem allowing him to do it, but I'm not ready to let the city take on that liability of an unpermitted roof for the next two years, cuz like I said, anything could happen. We could have the storm and one of those panels flies off and chops somebody's head off and we're.
Yes.
We're deep in the hole because of that.
Oh, you can, you can, you can, if, if the council wants to consider this, you can say, uh, immediate removal of the non, of the unpermitted roof and, and grant, and security and, and if, if that's a condition as well and then um, approve if it's your will, the other conditions.
Caesar, you comfortable with that? Ask him. Name and address, please.
Julian Perez, uh, for the, um, car wash at fifty-three fifty West Twelfth Avenue. Uh, I'm putting myself into this business and I really wanna make it profitable, of course, and, uh, of course serve the community, create a employment for the community, uh, and make it look nice. Uh, I drove by several times before I, you know, get into an agreement with, uh, Mr. Gaetan. Uh, and I knew I could make it better for the city and for everybody around the, 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 the complex and the car wash. So that's gonna look great, it's gonna look nice, people is gonna love it. But of course, you have to give me a chance. Uh, the only thing that I was, that I was able to get with Claudia, she was amazing with us and she was able to give us a one year, only one year for me to build up some capital and make it the way that she helped us build that car wash. The one, I don't know if you saw what she did for us, she created a complete floor plan with, uh, within these five hundred and sixty square feet and it was amazing, but the cost is a little bit high. Uh, we had paid already like twenty, twenty, twenty-five thousand in surveys, floor plans, uh, uh, all the documentation that we needed to do to be able to do the variance uh, since last November. So it had been a lot of time and, and money spent it. So the only thing that I'm asking is for maybe, I know that you say maybe, well, not two years, but at least to give me one year with the building that had been there for thirty-five years. Uh, just one year, so I can capitalize, make some money and then build, remove both, uh, buildings, the larger one and the legal one and build the one that Claudia presented to us, which is amazing. Uh, so it's only one year. Uh, we agreed to that before and, uh, we were trying to, to get Mr. Caesar to help us get maybe an, an extra second year, but we know that it, it doesn't seem like it's gonna be possible. But if you could give us one year, uh, you know, you will see it in one year, even though with the existing builders, you're gonna see a difference in the neighborhood. And noise wise, you know, the whole thing is pretty much residential and, uh, with my management and with his management, uh, that's gonna be a great place and you, you're gonna, you're gonna see it within, within months, you're gonna see a difference.
Through the chair?
Yes, sir.
Not with an unpermitted structure, that liability is on us and they will not, if he can't afford to put a roof now, eighty thousand dollars, how's he gonna be able to afford to pay a million dollar lawsuit if something happens? So, go ahead.
We, we've, we've already reported it to code, so it's, it's already a code compliance case. So they're gonna go out and they're gonna give them a code violation. So there's no waiting on this. If, if they wait two years, they're gonna have daily fines and it's gonna be, so their best interest is to remove it immediately anyway. We're not giving them time.
So then what's the rights?
I don't know, well, it, it, but they, they need to remove it because.
Asking for that, Caesar, it doesn't sound like what he's saying. I mean, we, we would like to see it removed.
Yeah, I just spoke to, to them and they will remove the large one immediately and work with the smaller one. Okay?
Yeah, if it's permitted, I'm good with that. I don't think the car wash itself is, is a problem.
So, and that to put the expense on the security, let's say, but let's say if they monitor it, if we see something, we're gonna make them put security. How do you feel comfortable with that?
What can you do there?
I don't know if we can do it or not. Any complaints from the, from the police? Just monitor, just I had a lot.
I like the idea of what you said about a security guard.
I like the security guard.
And I, I don't think it's just on the weekends, I think.
That's fine.
But I don't know.
We'll, we'll agree.
Anything we go.
It's a, you know, these kind of things, it's a kind of thing that, um, in, um, in a conditional use permit and an exception, it's very customary to put conditions. The variance, it's not as common, but you, you can request and see if they, um, if they are willing to do that and of course, uh, you know, how you vote is up to the will of this council, so, you know.
Um. They have agreed to include in the, in the DOR a revision in six months to see if there's a need for security. They're voluntarily doing that.
Okay, so that means that.
Okay. That means he's got six months to clean it up.
Yeah, 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 but I don't wanna wait six months.
Let's do three months.
Do a month.
I'm sorry?
Do one month, then off.
Okay.
And then, but, but.
We'll, we'll take three months.
The roof goes.
Oh, the roof goes. Okay, we'll take three months, yeah.
So, but the council has said so far is non-con, non-con, non-conforming roof to be removed at once? Uh, Caesar, listen, please, non-conforming roof to be removed at once, uh, if there. Uh, if there is a need, uh, because there's violations in one month. Um, a sec, a, 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 a security guard, a security guard will be hired. And, uh, you know, that's, that's all I have.
One month?
Can we, can we do the three months like?
Three months.
The council president, thank you.
Three months, three months.
Okay.
If there's cases or violations.
So that means if the police comes out, we have violations or anything like that, we're going to give, they can.
So it's the penalty that has. I just want to clarify one thing, though.
Revocation of the license.
Got you, okay. Since he's going to be trying to clean it up.
Yes, sir.
I would imagine he's going to be calling the police.
Yes.
So I just want to make sure that that.
No, the neighbors are, are, are alive. I'm, I'm trusting that that noise and different noise will hear it, yeah.
May not, Caesar, there's no question, he looks, you know, I'm doing it for him, man, he's a very responsible person, he's going to be all over that, so.
Yeah, so again, to reiterate what we've written down. That non-conforming roof will be removed at once, if there are violations and cases in three months, a security guard. Uh, will be, um. Will be hired and, uh, um. And besides the usual penalty, that, um, if there's violations, the approval can be revoked.
Of the license.
Yeah, the license can be, the licensed B T R will be revoked.
Alright, that's fair for both you and the community, right? Yes, sir.
Well, can you be more specific on that, please?
Yes.
Well, there would be, there would be a license revocation hearing and the license revocation hearing would, would be done by, uh, the. You know, the business tax official, you'd have the ability to defend yourself there, but the idea is that there, if there are still violations. And there's still cases and there's still drug use or drunkenness or whatever, they're going to revoke your B T R.
Okay, so basically, I'm going to be running the, the car wash, so I'm not going to allow any drug dealers or any type of drinking or anything. So basically, on my side, there's not going to be a violation, is there any other reason why a violation will be taking place?
I, I don't, I don't believe, again, I can't predict, but I don't, I don't believe it would be equitable, like if there's something going on. That's not in the car wash somewhere else on the property, I can't predict the case, but that would not seem to be attributable to you. Another operator, okay, so, I mean, that's, that's.
Good, Caesar, that's fine, alright, can we have a motion with all that?
Motion. That, that would be as amended.
Can I have a second?
Please take role.
Second by Mr. Junco. Mr. Tumidor is absent, Mr. Zogby.
Yes.
Mr. La Vega is absent, Mr. Junco. Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Motion carries, the item is approved as amended, second reading and public hearing is scheduled for October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. Next item, please.
Item fifteen H. First reading of proposed ordinance amending City of Hialeah, ordinance number twenty-twenty-three. One-two-four, to allow a five-story multi-facility deployment with fifty-two residential units. Superseding the previously approved eight-story multifamily development with forty-eight residential units. Repealing variances, approving seventeen percent of the units with an area of six hundred and ninety-two square feet. Where eight hundred and fifty square feet is a minimum area required and only ten percent of units may have an area of six hundred square feet. And waive the building mass and building frontage development standards, granting a variance permit to allow forty-eight multifamily units. Ninety-two percent with an area less than seven hundred square feet or seven hundred square feet is a minimum required. And only twenty-five percent of residential units may have a minimum area of five hundred square feet. Allow twenty-two percent previous area where thirty percent is a minimum required. And to allow the mitigation of six parking spaces as per section ninety-eight dash one-five-seven-nine subsection seven. All in contrast to Hialeah or, of ordinances, section ninety-eight dash one-six-three-zero-point-two. And section E of the Hialeah landscape manual dated July of twenty-twenty-five and title three and lawn requirements by zoning cla, classification. Property located at one-one-one-six Palm Avenue, Hialeah, Zone C two liberal retail commercial district. Within the neighborhood business district and legally described herein, repeating all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith. Providing penalties for violation hereof, providing for servability clause and providing for an effective date.
I missed it, first reading, sir.
First reading.
Okay, I'm first reading, Caesar.
Good evening, Caesar Mastroi, with offices at eighty-one oh five Northwest one fifty fifth Street, Miami Lakes, Florida. That item is actually going to be re-advertised, re-noticed, uh, there was a mistake made in some of the numbers, so it's going to be coming back.
Okay, so.
So, no action on that, it's, it's, no, no action, it has to be re-noticed.
Thank you, Caesar.
It'll, it'll will be re-noticed to go back to zoning?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it has to go back to the platino zoning board.
Next item, please.
Item fifteen I, first reading of proposed ordinance granting a special use permit to allow a medical research center. Conducting clinical trials to test new drugs, devices and other forms of treatment to operate in conjunction with an existing medical center. Property located at four-four four-zero West Sixteenth Avenue, Hialeah Zone C two liberal retail commercial district. And legally described herein, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith. Providing penalties for violation hereof, providing for servability clause and providing for an effective date.
Right. Caesar, I guess Hialeah is a new drug user?
Yeah, I guess so. Uh, I don't think this one's going to be as controversial as the last one, Caesar Mastroi. Office at eighty-one oh five Northwest one fifty fifth Street, Miami Lakes, Florida. So the short version of this is, there's an existing La Mercedes Medical Center. This is going to be within the medical center, it's going to do the clinical trials, drugs, devices. Operating within the medical center will do phase two and four clinical research studies. Um, the declaration will say that we are going to have a maximum of five patients per day by appointment only. From eight to five and no overnight, uh, stays whatsoever, there's no changes whatsoever to the interior of the building. The parking, this shopping center is huge, is, is more than adequate, um, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
I'm good. Sir. Through the chair, this is a very low impact, uh. Request, uh, motion.
Look at it.
See, it's been working past weeks, huh? You got a motion?
Second.
Mr. Junco?
Yes.
Mr. La Vega is absent, Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Tumidor is absent, Mr. Zogby?
Yes.
Motion carries, the item is approved, second reading and public hearing is scheduled for October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five.
Thank you, good night.
Thank you, sir.
Item sixteen A, proposed resolution, approving the final decision of the planning and zoning board, decision number twenty-twenty-five dash zero-eight. Allowing a rear setback of twelve point five feet or twenty feet are required for the legalization of an existing two hundred and fifty-five square feet. Aluminum roof terrace and to allow an interior south side setback of two feet or seven point five feet are required. For an existing two hundred and twenty-six square feet aluminum roof. Property located at fifty-three sixty-four West Fourteenth Court, Hialeah, Zoned R one, one family district and providing for an effective date.
Name and address, please, I'm so sorry, wait all day. Yeah, you did, man. You saw it, right? You've been here with us five thirty, right?
I'm about to leave that chair home.
Yeah, right.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
Claudia, this will be permitted, though, his, his roof, it will be permitted.
It is legalized.
Imagine, it's obviously unpermitted or else he wouldn't be here in front of us, so it's going to have to comply with all the code.
Correct.
Has it done that already or?
No, not yet, this is part of, that, this is the first step for, for them to get to the legalization.
Oh, it says it's no good, it's got to be torn down.
Building code doesn't pass.
Then it doesn't pass.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm okay.
Can I have a motion, motion, can I have a second? And good luck to you, sir.
Thank you.
We have a motion by Zogby, second by Junco, Mr. La Vega is absent, Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Tumidor is absent, Mr. Zogby?
Yes.
Mr. Junco? Motion carries, the item is approved.
Mr. Council President, can, can I? Hold on, hold on, just, it's just, it's just something, it's just a technical thing I want to mention if I can ask for your indulgence. You know, uh, just something I want to put in your mind, uh, because it's uncharted waters with the rebate ordinance, that's an ordinance. And that's four votes under the city law, right, to pass four votes. So I just want to put in your mind that if that money is found or it comes from attrition or vacancies or whatever. That's an ordinance, that's four votes, however, if you have to. Touch the char, you have to touch the budget, if you have to touch the reserves, if you have to touch the monies. That's, that are budgeted in our budget, by our charter, that's five votes.
Okay.
Alright, so I just want to mention, very technical point, but I just want to mention.
So in other words, because it was four votes, you can't touch the money in the budget at this point?
Well, the, the four votes is the, is the concept of, of the rebate, but this, this only has to do with the source of that. If you find it from whatever, without changing the budget. To me, that's four votes, we, we've had a lot of discussions about this because it's the first thing. But if then the budget has to be altered because, oh, this is coming out of reserves or this is coming out of this or this is coming out of that. That's five votes for our charter.
Yes.
Because you're changing the budget, that's, it's a technical point, but I wanted to make it, thank you.
Got it. We're good?
Yeah.